Good evening. Welcome to Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. On tonight's agenda, we have at 7:00 the community input, at 7:05 finance director appointment, 7:10 senior tax relief presentation, at 7:30 Board of Selectmen award of the CPS parking lot reconstruction contract, at 7:40 town administrator review of fiscal 21 planning and Board of Health personnel requests, in 8:15 the Board of Selectmen vote to support or not support the individual special town meeting warrant articles, at 8:45 town government organization policy and bylaw review, at 9:15 appointments and resignations, 9:20 cemetery deeds, 9:25 town administrators' report, 9:40 the Board of Selectmen liaison reports, 9:50 minutes, which I didn't see in my packet, so we're not doing those, and 10:00 adjournment. And as always, there are some times when we take some of these out of order, we try to keep the important ones that we think people are going to be interested in and want to come to at the time that they're supposed to start, then we sometimes fill in other things if we're ahead of schedule, which is not very often. So, is there anybody here for community input tonight? Deb, are you together?
I'm room two, she's room one, just got one of those together.
Oh, okay. So, both of you come forward. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't, you know.
My name's Debbie Bempey. I'm actually here representing the Garden Club. I live in Gilroad.
I'm Marilyn Gagini. I'm also here for the Garden Club, and I live on Herb Street. So, I'm just going to tell you that we're here to give you the heads up as the most important people in town to know about everything that's going on in town. The Carlisle Garden Club has decided to honor the 50th anniversary of Earth Day next year. As you know, Earth Day started in 1970 and was really the impetus for all kinds of environmental legislation and the establishment of the EPA in our country, and has just grown and developed into a worldwide phenomenon of celebration and education about the environment. We've decided that we thought it would be a great idea to participate in that, and so we're going to do two events with your permission and assistance, and permissions to hold something on the town common or in the center park depending on how many people we can get. But we're going to have two things. We're going to do an adult and teen oriented TED Talk-like evening presentation in the Cory auditorium, which we're applying for, which we do have insurance to cover thankfully. And that will be on the actual Earth Day, which is Wednesday, April 22nd. It happens to be school vacation week, which actually I think would be nice because we can use the auditorium and hopefully get lots of folks to attend. That will be something that perhaps Deb may like to address a little further, as she's in charge of getting us wonderful speakers for that.
Well, the idea is that this is a community input. We're all, we all live in the woods. A lot of us are doing really interesting things regarding sustainability and alternative technologies. So, the idea is that we'll get residents from town, town residents, who are actually doing really innovative stuff, to do a 10-minute presentation telling the rest of town what they're doing, because I think the thing with sustainability and climate change litigation is we've all got to work together, and this is an opportunity for everybody to knowledge share and get together and learn what your neighbors are up to. So, that's why we really want it to be, you know, a very different garden club event. It's more, much more about, you know, how we ensure that we have a livable planet in the future.
And then the second event will be a family-oriented afternoon, Sunday afternoon on April 26th. We're thinking that probably will be on the town common, if you agree, that FRS has already agreed. In fact, they're going to, their environmental action committee has decided to co-sponsor the event with us that day. It'll be basically a couple of hours for environmental activities, education, fun, music, art, a gathering of the community.
Pardon me?
No, that comes later. We got the seat swap before and the plant sale later, and this in between.
And we want to involve as many town departments, committees, nonprofit organizations, religious organizations in town, everybody in town. We want to invite everybody to participate because this is a big deal, and we've already started reaching out, but Deb's going to be doing a ton more of reaching out to a different person in the community to participate. So, there you go. Any questions?
Sounds great. Yeah, good. Right, so now I'm going to change of my hat, and now I'm Debbie Bempey from the Poppy Project. And it's just a heads up. Now, the Poppy Project was always meant to be just for last year. I have 3,500 poppies sitting in my garage, my loopters. They're obviously, the Poppy Project brought a lot of joy to a lot of people. I am, I have no desperate feeling either way. I'm more than happy to put them out again next, this, for November, for Veterans Day. But if you decide no, it's a one-off, it was a one-off event, and we should keep it as that, and it should be that, as precious as that, that's fine by me too. But it's actually your decision, not mine, because I had to ask you for permission in the first place. So, if you could just get back to me and say, yes, go ahead with it, I'll organize it, but you say no, let's keep it as special as it was, that's fine, just a tone.
We didn't have another 100 years.
It's the 75th anniversary of World War II. You really want, I mean, we can, I think there's been so many wars.
There's always an anniversary, yeah.
We can probably find an anniversary for every, every single year, but it, I really, I, you know, it's, it's the selectmen's decision, or select board's decision, as we say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We will put that on the agenda then, to have that discussion.
Discussion.
All right. Tim, finance director appointment.
Okay. Well, I might have been getting a little bit ahead of myself calling it the finance director appointment. I think we're not quite there to the point of asking you to appoint a finance director tonight. However, I would, the search committee does have a preferred candidate, who is Kim Kane of Edgar Town Mass, who's the town accountant slash finance director down there, and has 32 years' experience as both a town accountant and a tax collector, and highly regarded in the field. I know Priscilla knows her professionally and has a high opinion. Our town auditors also do Edgar Town, and I talked with our auditor Dan Sullivan, and he couldn't have been more glowing in his praise. He really thought that, you know, she'd be a very good candidate for the position of finance director. What I would ask the board for tonight is your authority to continue to negotiate with her on terms of employment and salary and so forth, and presuming we can come to terms on that to authorize me to ask Chief Fisher to begin the background check, because we're going to do, obviously, a Cory check, background check, credit check, which we do under normal circumstances. The background check does involve some, making some inquiries in the community where the person lives, so it means the chief or someone is going to have to go to, you know, Martha's Vineyard, you know. It's too bad, it's too bad the weather is so warm, it's just, someone has to, someone has to do that. So, if all goes according to plan, I would hope to bring her to our next meeting on October 8th and ask you to appoint her. I know Kate was on the search committee, Scott Triolo of the finance committee, and Kevin Perkins of the audit committee, and we all really thought, yeah, we felt very lucky we had a candidate of that, of that caliber, because frankly, we had less than 10 applicants for the position, and not a good time to be looking, and, you know, certainly under the circumstances, it was, you know, so to have someone that kind of rose above the pack was a good thing.
Do you think we'll be able to meet the person next time?
Yes, that would be my intention, yeah, before you have to make the appointment. But I just wanted you to know where we were and get your authorization to go forward.
I assume she's relocating?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no, you might ask why someone would leave Martha's Vineyard after 32 years.
You did ask for that.
Yeah. She's relocating to the Boston area. She has friends there and has family in Vermont, and this is that much closer to that, and, you know, it's not an easy decision, I suppose, to leave after 32 years, but she wants to make a change, and hopefully that's, that's good for us.
Yeah, relocating to Boston.
Yeah. I think just your, just the sense of the board, but I think.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
David? It's up to you. Senior tax relief presentation.
Is this an actual presentation?
This may take.
This is an actual presentation, if you guys don't mind.
Nope.
It may take a minute or two to come up.
Should we take our?
While you guys are relocating, I'm just doing, doing me a big favor by trying to get this up on the screen. I'll say that a lot of what I'm going to present is based on some research that was done fall of 2017 by the Center for Retirement Research at Boston College, and they wrote a wonderful research paper, which I think you guys have in your, in your packets. And on page three of that research paper, there's a great chart comparing the various types of senior tax relief programs in the state, and we are honored, or at least I'm honored today, to have Abigail Walters with us, who is one of the authors of the research paper. So, at a certain point in this, what I'm going to be doing, I just may turn to Abigail, and she can describe, Abby, she can describe any, in more articulate terms than I would, what we're trying to do here.
Okay. So, just beginning at the end, number eight, because I know I can get off track, so bring me back if I do. But at the end of the day, for Carlisle, we can improve our tax deferral program, and so we just have a few suggestions on that. And if you, you guys think that that's a decent idea, we have a tax advisory committee, myself, Angela Smith, Melissa as the assessor, and a couple Carlisle, oh, and our finance director, unfortunately. So, maybe we're going to have to wait a little bit to believe the new finance director. But if you guys authorize it, then we'll get together and we'll, we'll make a recommendation to you, which might have to be an article on the town warrant. But the second thing that we're going to ask for is, is something that occurred to me when Tammy Cuvea was presenting to you guys. And remember, at the end of our new state rep, at the end of that meeting, toward the end, one or more of you said, what else can we do? And what else can you do is, we, both Abby and I actually were in town today at the State House advocating for a certain bill that would improve the overall tax deferral program, not just Carlisle's, but the whole state's. And if Carlisle could just write a letter from the selectmen saying, we advocate for this bill, which Tammy Cuvea is co-sponsor of, that would be a help. That would be something that you guys could do, and it wouldn't cost us anything. It would just be, it's actually to create a pilot program, a three-year pilot program. So, anyway, with that, I'm just going to, I'm just going to go on. So, why offer tax relief, not just to be nice, it sounds good, but one reason is to help older adults aged in place. You know, if you're not at home, where are you going to be? Maybe you're moving somewhere less costly or downsizing if you can, but we all know housing is an issue. Or if you get really sick, maybe you have to go into nursing home or assisted living, and if you do, if you can afford it, then, you know, there are some nice places. But if you can't, then the state is paying for it through Mass Health, and the state is paying billions of dollars into Mass Health, and 90%, more than 90% of that is for institutional care. So, there's really a financial interest, or there should be, in trying to help people age at home, if possible. Not every case is possible, obviously. So, one of the things, one of the drivers here was a study done by UMass Boston. They, they put a paper out a number of years ago talking about economic insecurity, and it wasn't just for Massachusetts, it was for every state in the country, and they rated every state in the country according to the cost of living. And they came up with this, and they used housing, healthcare, transportation, and miscellaneous stuff. And they came up with this metric, which showed that there are people that are, live below the poverty line that obviously get social assistance. There are people that are above a certain income level that are fine, because they're above that income level. But there's people that are in between the poverty level and that upper income level that are struggling, and that's the, where, what they consider the economic insecurity. So, this might surprise you or maybe not, Massachusetts is the number two state in terms of economic insecurity. That's bad. I mean, Mississippi is the worst, and we're the second worst, and New Jersey and New York are very close on our heels, and it's largely because of the cost of living here in the state, not because we're bad people or a bad state. It's cost of living. So, what can you do in terms of, of tax relief programs? There is, and I know a lot of people here are familiar with this, we have a wonderful senior tax work-off abatement program. Ours, the state allows up to $1,500, we're doing $1,000, and actually, we're fine with that, but we could go higher if, you know, the law allows us to go higher if we want to do. We have 25 slots, so we've allocated $25,000 as a town, and that was in, in the town meeting of 2013 that we upped that to $25,000, if I remember correctly, because I had just, just come that year, or the year before. The one in red is the Senior Circuit Breaker Tax Credit, which is a statewide program. Some people may be familiar with it. In terms of participation, it's probably the most effective program in the state. Then there's senior tax exemptions, which are offered through the assessor's office, and there's a couple different kinds, and so the assessor's office has a listing, which I think I included in your packets, which shows what we offer, including the tax deferral program. The, the thing is about the exemptions is that they have relatively low income levels, so it's really hard to qualify. So, I asked Mary Ann today up in the assessor's office, how many we have that do qualify, and she said five or six. So, it's not a lot of people. I mean, and she did, and I said, is that just this year or prior year? She's like, no, every year. It's really hard to qualify for. And then lastly, there's the Senior Tax Deferral Program, which is kind of literally what we're talking about today, and that has, the statute has an income level of as low as $20,000, and an interest rate, if you do defer your taxes, which is putting off your taxes, of 8% paid to the city or town. The town has the ability to lower that interest rate and has the ability to raise the income limit. So, in Carlisle, I'll show you where Carlisle is at momentarily. So, from those four programs, one has a 13% participation rate, and one has a 0.2% participation rate, and the other two are in between. I'm not revealing what they were. These numbers up top, the homeowners age 65-plus from 2016, that's taken from Abby's research. There were 456,000 homeowners age 65-plus in the state, and there were 179,000 renters 65-plus in the state. So, that's where I'm getting my percentages, because I know what the numbers are from her research, and we know what the numerator and denominator are. So, the income, the exemptions, I'm going to power through some of these slides. The exemptions allow $500 if you're over age 70. The town has the ability to lower it to, excuse me, to raise the exemption from a 500 to 1,000 and lower the age limit from 70 to 65. Ours, kind of strangely, does go up to 1,000, which is good, but it has the age limit at 60, and I'm not sure why, and I think it's something that maybe town councils should look at, but I'm really not sure. Not that I object to 60, it's just that everywhere, everything I've seen uses that age 65. The circuit breaker credit, you have, if you're age, if you're a single person, you can earn up to $58,000, and if you're married, up to $88,000 in order to qualify. But the thing, the thing that gets a lot of people here in Carlisle is really not the income limit, it's this, the value of the home. And we're not the only, we're not the only town where that's a problem, but it is a problem for here. However, as you'll see, people still participate, and it still actually works. So, here's the slide that compares where we're at, and this is, this is from information from the Department of Revenue from 2016, but I don't think the figures have changed really very much. We've had 61, we had 61 filers that did the circuit breaker credit in 2015, I guess. So, that might be, that number might be a little bit higher, a little bit lower in recent years, but it's probably around the same. So, that saved our taxpayers that did successfully apply for $62,000, and the average credit they got was over $1,000. The current limit on the credit, it's indexed by inflation, so it goes up every year, the current amount you can get back is 1,100. So, getting an average of over 1,000 is good. As you can see, it's the second highest amongst all the towns. And, you know, we're, if you look at Concord, for example, we're at 61, they're at 260, but their population is, you know, what, four times as big as ours, so proportionally, we're about where we were with, with Concord. And this is, again, this is a statewide program. It's nothing that we have to legislate. People just file for it in their state income tax, so it's, so it's, it's, you know, pretty straight.
They have to know about it.
They have to know about it. That's the big thing, they have to know about it. AARP puts out a training program for volunteers in order to help people do it. We don't have any AARP preparers here in Carlisle, but we, this is one of the few programs where the COA, we, here in Carlisle doesn't do it, but we send people either to Chelmsford or to Bedford for their preparers, and it's very helpful. The way it works, very, very, very briefly, is if you earn 10, if you, it's that second paragraph down, if you earn $40,000, 10% of that 40 would be $4,000, and so if your tax is over $4,000, then you can get a credit. So, if somebody's tax is 10,000, and the 10% of what they earn is 4,000, then they're eligible for the whole 1,100 credit. If, if, but they could be eligible for less than that, at that point.
That's all from the state.
That's all from the state.
That doesn't cut down the amount of income that we're getting.
Exactly. It's all from the state, and every year the figures change slightly because they have it indexed. It comes out from the Department of Revenue every, in the fall. This is one of the only programs that renters also benefit from. I'm not going to go through the math, but they, there's a formula that renters can benefit and get the credit as well. It's an imputed thing. I'm happy to go over it if anybody has any questions, but I'm trying to respect the 20 minutes. Then this Senior Tax Workoff Program, I think I described that already before, that's working pretty successfully for us. It's not that we wouldn't want to up it from 1,000 to 1,500. That money comes from the town overlay, so we'd have to get, you know, agreement from the assessors. It's just that it's actually hard to get people to work the number of hours just to get up to 1,000. They have to work about 83 volunteer hours just to get up to 1,000. So, I mean, yes, we would love to have people have $1,500 off, but it's hard enough to get them up to 1,000. So, when I came here in 2012, I think Carlisle was doing 700, and we had upped it from 700 per person to 1,000, so.
And you said there are 25 slots?
Yes, they don't have to be full slots. We have, Angela, as you guys know, is very innovative, but we have a lot of people that do half slots or quarter slots. So, if somebody can only have, has a wherewithal to do a half a slot, they'll get a $500 credit that can earn, you know, and the, it's an imputed amount that you earn. The minimum wage is used, $12. So, it's $12 divided into $1,000, gives you the 83, or whatever it is, hours that you have to work in order to get the full slot.
And those all, have they all been filled?
Interestingly enough, I think the last two years, we've used 23 out of the 25 slots. So, for one reason or another, some people are just aren't able to complete it, or in order to do the work, you have to work for a town department. So, the town department has to want you to work. You know, we have people at the library, we have people that help out with, where's Linda? Linda Fantasia's got somebody here, who was a senior tax worker, and we have various people that help out, the COA as well. But, you know, it has to work. It has to work for the department, and it has to work for the people.
There's no income or assessed value restriction of that?
Our program does not have an assessed value. Some towns do. The statute actually says that the town can design that aspect of the program. So, some towns have an income limit. We don't have the overwhelming demand for it, so there's really no reason to set the income limit, but we could if we wanted to. Mass property tax deferral, I'll talk to this, Abby's really the expert at it. We have zero people participating in it, and in the seven years I've been here, we've had one person in seven years that have participated. There's reasons for that. So, somebody who's age 65 and above, who owns their, their property, has been an owner of property in Massachusetts for five years and has lived in Massachusetts, Massachusetts for 10 years, and as the statute says, has an income of not more than $20,000, can apply. Now, a lot of towns have raised that income limit. You can raise it to, up to the circuit breaker for a single person, which is currently $58,000. And that's one of the things we'll advocate for, is that we raise that limit up to 50. Right now, we're at 40 here in Carlisle. But in order to defer your taxes, you have to put, there's a lien that's put on your house, and that's, you know, not agreeable for some people, understood. They want to leave the home to their, to, you know, whoever they want to leave it to. But, you know, if they're paying $10,000 in taxes, they're deferring that $10,000 for a couple of years in a row, it could help them stay in their home. And then when the home gets sold, the town gets the money back, plus, as things stand now, 8% interest per year. So, it's not necessarily that they're going to lose their home, it's just they lose a portion of whatever their, the taxes that have been accruing. But, you know, when people hear 8%, and people hear lien, then it's a deterrent, and that's, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why, anyway.
Excuse me, David, did you say that 8% could be changed?
Yes, the 8% could be changed, and, perfect lead-in, Barney, perfect lead-in. There we are. We're in, we're in the aqua, we're at 8%, the interest rate. Chelmsford's also at 8%, Borek is at 8%, but Acton's at 1%, Concord's at 4%, Lexington's at 1%, Lincoln's at 4%, Littleton's at 1%. I don't know about this 0% at Westford, that looks a little fishy to me, but.
Westford and, oh, I can't think of them. Marshfield also has 0% interest rate, and they still only have like 5%.
Yes. So, you probably have this, like, Abby has, like, these towns memorized, but, yeah, I mean, I think there's, Lexington is a really big proponent in this, and if you look, you can see the number of participants, you know, 41, there's only a few towns that are at that level. Lexington, Newton, I think, is number one, Wellesley's pretty high, Quincy's pretty high for some reason. I think it, it depends on the people, if you're promoting the program and if there's actually a demand. But yes, in answer to your question, we could lower that rate. I don't know that it would drive up the people, but it would, might make people who are thinking about it to not be, not look at it unfavorably. Littleton had lowered their rate a couple of years ago. I actually had spoken about it with Bonnie, she was very helpful with it, but as you can see, it didn't, it didn't raise the number of participants, at least recently.
The share of 65-plus homeowners by percentage? Share of what?
Share of actual homeowners. So, on the next slide, I think there's four.
98% of homeowners in Carlisle?
Yes.
Are 65 and older?
No, no.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand.
It's the share of people who are 65 and older who are homeowners. So, 98% of people, 65-year-olds own a home.
Okay, that's.
So, right, so there are four, as of the time that Abby and her colleagues did the research, there were 402 homeowners at 65-plus, and a very large percent, 98%.
Wow.
I know, we have amongst the highest, and the upper income towns tend to have it. I think Weston, Weston is, and, you know, some of the towns are at that same level as us, but it's pretty high.
It's statewide only 93 and 26.
That's where I'm going with this, Nathan. That's where I'm going with this.
Just also, 30 homeowners in Carlisle have an income of under $20,000.
Yes, and the next slide shows the extension. This is what you did by hand, right?
This is, yeah, these are based off the current population survey from the census, and so.
The federal census?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, good point, Kate. So, 30 people have income as of, as of 2017 or 2016, whenever the research was done. That same 30 people are also under 20,000, 25,000. When you go up to 30,000, it goes up to 73, up to 40,113. At 40,000, it becomes significant to us at the COA, because as Angela pointed out to me, and the qualifications for fuel assistance is over, is just over 40,000.
Are these adjusted gross figures? Just the gross income figures?
Gross income?
Not net?
Yeah, it's gross income.
Yeah.
So, earlier though, you said.
That same thirty people are also under twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand. When you go up to thirty thousand, it goes up to seventy-three, up to forty thousand, one hundred and thirteen. At forty thousand, it becomes significant to us at the COA, because as Angela pointed out to me, and the qualifications for fuel assistance is over, is just over forty thousand.
Are these adjusted gross figures?
I'm sorry.
Just the gross income figures?
Gross income.
Not net?
Yeah, it's gross income.
Yeah.
So earlier, though, you said that there were only four people that would qualify for.
The exemptions?
Yeah, based upon income. How, how does that match with thirty people under twenty thousand? Qualify, you have to be making less.
Yeah, the qualifications for exemptions are very low. Yeah, yeah. There's a way of doing that, of changing that to, we could change the statute, it's, it's section forty-one C that we're using. We could change it to forty-one D, which would index to inflation, it would add like five thousand dollars to the qualification, add five thousand dollars of capacity for people to earn. So maybe a few people would be, one sec, Dave, would be eligible, but, but we don't control, I mean, we could adopt, we could adopt the different part of the statute, but we don't control the figures. What were you going to say, Dave?
Just, David Freeman, I just wrote, I'm having worked with some of this stuff for some of the town plans that have been done. My experience with the census figures for Carlisle is that these numbers have pretty high plus or minus in terms of accuracy. So I think, if you use these figures, you should go and check that, because some of them, the margin of error was greater than the number. In the census, it'll say ten percent of, or ten college residents are X, but it's plus or minus nineteen.
Nineteen percent?
No, plus or minus nineteen people.
Oh, okay.
The range is from.
Okay.
None of them to thirty of them.
I see, okay.
These numbers I wouldn't take as being as precise as they look.
Okay, you're talking about in terms of the income?
Well, in terms of anything for the census for Carlisle, since we're so small, in not dissimilar years, they do a small number of people, and then they.
Oh, the US Census, sorry.
And then they do a calculation over the whole population, so the margin of error is huge.
So, so in other words, like, if we're looking at the under sixty thousand, which is a hundred and thirty, it could actually be a hundred and forty-nine, or it could be a, or it could be nineteen less than a hundred and thirty?
Well, I mean, it, it depends on what the margin of error, it could be a hundred and thirty, plus or minus thirty.
I see, okay.
So it could be anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and sixty, but.
Right.
In some cases, the margin of error is literally higher than the number that they say is at that income level.
Okay, well, I guess we, we could, we could accept that.
Saying you should check it if you want to present them, because they look like very specific numbers.
Right.
They're likely not that precise.
I just want to also ask, on some of those things where you were talking about qualifying or not qualifying.
Yep.
And those thirty people that say that, that say they really are under twenty.
Yep.
You might be ceiling in a house which is worth six hundred or seven hundred thousand, and that's what disqualifies them, is not their income.
On the circuit, from the Circuit Breaker thing, yes, yeah, that's true. That's true.
And not for the deferral?
Not for the deferral.
Just takes, okay.
So, so, you know, there's, the other things that, that don't allow people to be in the program and jump in if I'm missing something is, first of all, you have to own the home. If you have a mortgage, technically you can have a mortgage and do the deferral, but it would mean that the mortgager would have to agree to allow the lien. And unfortunately, with, you know, we don't have the neighborhood bank lending us money now, it's hard to get the mortgager to agree to allow the lien. So a lot of people that don't own their home that have a mortgage can't do the deferral. Is it my, would that be fair? Okay. Yeah, so there's that. But still, this is the same slide that I had toward the beginning, but with the, the programs written in. So the Circuit Breaker, which is the only statewide program, has eighty-three thousand participants, and that's thirteen percent of the, of the total population from, from the Boston College statistics. The, the tax exemptions, which we do offer, you know, it's, it's fairly low, around three percent. The senior tax worker, this, I actually, is an estimate that I did based on some new mass figures, using twenty-five slots as an average in the two hundred and forty towns that do offer the, the Senior Tax Worker Program. And so I'm estimating that at six thousand, which would be one point three percent. But the, the Senior Tax Deferral Program is, is limping along at nine hundred, or today at, when we were doing, at the hearing, you said eight hundred.
Yeah.
It's gotten, it's gone lower, not higher. So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, I want to say a broken program, but. So this is where we're going with this. It would be great, at the end of the day, if Carlisle, if we would have a, a town war, an article that would lower the interest rate to something perhaps more palatable for people. It, it may not be a game changer, but it might help a little bit. And also, we're at forty thousand now, we could go up to the Circuit Breaker limit, which changes every year, but it's currently fifty-eight thousand. So that could help people, more people get the Circuit Breaker. I mean, sorry, do the tax deferral. Yeah. Right. So that's, that, again, that's just a suggestion, I'm not pounding the table for it, but it seems reasonable. It's not going to blow the doors off of what we're doing as a town. But what we would, and, there was another program that I wanted to mention because I think it would interest you guys, and it was something that Nathan said when Tammy Gouveille was presenting, that, that caught my attention. There's this means-tested senior exemption program out there, which is commonly known as the Sudbury Plan, because they're the first town that's done it. In order to have this program, you have to apply, what's the term? Home rule petition, thank you. So it, it, it's not a program that the state sponsors for every town, although that last, a bullet point says that last year, the, the legislature actually passed it, a hundred and fifty to zero, a, a uniform program for the, the means-tested senior exemption. But local towns, and, but it didn't, still didn't pass, because it went to the Senate, they, they added a, an amendment, and then they couldn't reconcile. But Concord's doing it, Harvard's doing it, and obviously Sudbury's doing it. Sudbury's really the only one that has a track record, like a three- or four-year track record. Concord only has done it for a year, and Westford is, excuse me, Harvard is just starting it this year. So I, I don't want to misrepresent things, but it is, to, to a point that, that Nathan made, what it does is it presupposes that like the Circuit Breaker, if your taxes are more than ten percent of your income, then the town will, will lower, will exempt some of your taxes. And it's, but they, in order to lower your taxes, they take, they shift that tax burden to the rest of the taxpayers. And, and it was a really good point that Nathan made last, at that meeting when Tammy Gouveille was here, and that's that, but what about that people at that next level who may also be struggling? And now their, now their taxes are going up even more in order to help the lowest of the lowest income. So I, I think that's a good point.
And is there any local leeway to change how the difference is shared among the rest of the taxpayers? I mean, like, could you choose to say what's only going to be spread across the people who are, you know?
I, I think so, I think so, but we, but the point is, is that it's not uniform, because they haven't passed anything uniform. Do you know any more about this than I do?
No, that's about all I know.
Yeah, yeah. I, from what I understand, it is added about a half a percent, for the towns that have used it, it's added about half a percent extra tax, tax to the other people. So that's the cost of doing that. So we're not advocating it, but in case people would ask about it, we wanted you to say.
Connecticut's had this for about fifty years.
Okay.
And we might look it up, because they have a statewide program. I know it's at least that long from my parents were there.
Do you want to talk about the statewide program? That's the last slide. Okay. So speaking, that's a good, good entry, statewide programs.
So I can, so something that we proposed in the brief that's included in your packets today is for a new statewide program for the property tax deferrals. And Representative Ed Kennedy proposed a pilot program to test the feasibility of a state-run property tax deferral, and, and this is modeled after our proposal. So under our proposal, the program would be open to all households sixty-five and older, it would remove any income limits. And the rationale for this is threefold. First, it's the idea that inadequate retirement income isn't just limited to low-income households, but many middle-income households are also facing this challenge as well. We, at the center, we have something called the National Retirement Risk Index, which compares the income people have in retirement, or before retirement, to the income that they will have in retirement, and it looks at whether or not they'll be able to maintain their standard of living based off of their retirement savings and their pension benefits. Second, we think that having universal eligibility will help eliminate any stigma associated with the program and with placing a lien on the house. And, and third, we think that an absence of an income limit actually helps facilitate the administration of the program at a statewide level. And this, we also learned a lot from the state of Oregon, which has had a state-run property tax deferral program with, and they had without income limits up until the early two thousands, and their programs has been around for almost fifty years. So our idea about how this program would function is that households sixty-five and older who have a primary residence in Massachusetts would be able to defer their property taxes until the deferrals and accumulated interests reach sixty percent of the first million dollars on the assessed value of the property. So we wouldn't be allowing people to defer on their multimillion-dollar home, second homes in Nantucket or anything like that. We think that the interest rate should be set to the state's borrowing costs plus a buffer to cover the administrative costs and any potential for defaults. But we also learned from the state of Oregon that they had very low default rates until the housing crisis, but that was because they allocated almost seventy-six, seventy-six million dollars out of their revolving loan fund towards another program, so all of a sudden they were lower on cash. And our idea is that another concern that localities have is that if they have a large amount of homeowners deferring their property taxes, even though they'll eventually recoup those taxes with interest, that could be happening in ten or twenty years, and often with strapped budgets, they want that money at a sooner time. So our idea is that the state would reimburse localities for those foregone taxes, and then the homeowner would repay directly to the state, so that it was cost-neutral at that individual and household level. And so the state would then place a lien on the house for unpaid taxes plus interest, and, and would be repaid when either the homeowner dies or sells the home. And the other important thing we think would really make this program successful is making application really easy. And so what we would envision is just having a simple check on the box on your property tax bill saying, I certify, I've been here for, you know, I meet all the residency requirements. And that would enable you to then start applying to participate in the program, and that your property tax bill would also give you an annual balance of the outstanding taxes you owe, because currently there isn't any mechanism process in the state to check your balance. And so on average, households would be able to defer about forty-three hundred dollars a year in taxes, and that's much more than, you know, the five hundred or thousand-dollar limit that you could receive from exemptions. So to finance the program, the state would set up a revolving loan fund, and the size of that revolving loan fund would depend on the program participation. And whether, and while the program participation nationwide is generally low, the new program would be well-publicized, it would be much more accessible than the current program. And I think the other important thing is that since it's universal and statewide, it'd be much more easier to communicate to your, you know, to your neighbor or to your friend who lives in another town about this new opportunity, whereas right now we have about three hundred and eleven different programs in the state. And so we had some estimations about what participation would look like, and we think that it would probably be around about ten percent of homeowners. And that's because in the state of Oregon, they peaked at about thirteen percent. And there's still a lot of folks who are driven by leaving their entire home equity to their children. And so with that participation rate, we think that the state would have to borrow a small amount to reimburse those localities, but then it would really just be during the initial startup period of the program, and then as homeowners sell or pass away, that they would be bringing money back into the state for that revolving loan fund. So we're really excited about this opportunity, but what we really need now is a pilot program to answer some key questions before we start an entire statewide program. And a pilot program would help answer questions like, how many people are likely to participate? How do you address the resistance to putting a lien on a home? That's one of the biggest barriers we've seen. Thinking about how people would use the program, are they going to use it for daily expenses? Or are they going to use it for, you know, making small modifications to your home, like installing bathroom bars and making sure that you can age in place in your home? And our other idea, too, is, you know, what is the appropriate loan-to-value ratio? We would expect, right now, our, our gut instinct is that a sixty percent loan-to-value ratio would be the limit to how much people can defer their property taxes, so that there's a buffer to the state in case there is a default. And then, of course, the last question is how big of a revolving loan fund the state would need to start this program and keep it running. And so that's why we're really excited about Senator Edward Kennedy's bill, which would create a study for a three-year pilot program looking into this, and that would be modeled after our program. So, thank you.
Thanks, Abby. So just to wrap things up, we really don't.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Essentially, this is a form of government-sponsored reverse mortgage. And do you know what the costs of this program would be versus reverse mortgage? Or alternatively, since these people almost always have a large amount of equity already in their house, a home equity loan?
So I think it's two important things. One, a home equity loan, you have to pay monthly, and this, you would have to wait.
It could be interest-only.
Yeah, but still, you're still having to make monthly payments. The other important thing is that you can do a property tax deferral on a year-to-year basis to decide how much you want to take out of your home. Where a reverse mortgage, you have much higher upfront costs, and if you need to end up moving, those high upfront costs are much harder to recoup if you suddenly need long-term care within three years. That's why so few people take out a reverse mortgage. And second, reverse mortgage really locks you in, you know, all right, I'm taking out a hundred thousand dollars of my home, and now I need to make sure I stay there, whereas this is much more flexible for people and how they see. So I see it very separately, yes.
So I guess statewide, but also just within Carlisle, do we know how many homes that are owned by people sixty-five and plus are loan-free, mortgage-free?
Own home. So that, I, sorry, so let me think about this through. So about eighty percent of people sixty-five and older own a home across Massachusetts. And then for folks, most enter retirement owning free and clear. I can't give you a precise number, but it's probably over sixty-five percent, somewhere to seventy percent, but I can follow up with you on that if you'd like.
That's, that was a good question, good question. I think the really attractive thing here for some, if you want to get down to it for, on an individual's town level, is for a small town like Carlisle, who depends on the cash flow of tax payments, having ten people do deferrals and having to, even though we know we're going to recoup those tax payments with interest, we're having to wait. And so it kind of does affect us, whereas the state program would, would actually pay for it, and then they would get the recouping of the, of the program. And so my last line, and then I'm going to, we'll leave you, is we could volunteer for Carlisle to be a participation in the pilot program. So if the, if the legislation passed, Carlisle could be one of the towns that participates as a pilot. They're looking for about ten thousand, ten thousand? Ten thousand participants?
Participants.
So that could be quite a few towns?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we want diversity in towns, too.
And the we, who's the we?
The Senator, so this is something that we were thinking about, the Senator for Retirement Research, I have three co-actors on this paper.
And then you've been working with Senator Kennedy to, around drafting the bill, and...
I actually wasn't involved in the drafting of the bill.
It was Mass Council on Asian, which is the advocacy group for the councils on Asian, actually asked Senator Kennedy to.
And this is the Kennedy and Wall?
Yes, that is Senator Kennedy from the wall.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, it's just a, it's just a suggestion, but if Carlisle was willing to, and Tammy Gouveille is a cosponsor, so it would be actually supporting Tammy, who's supporting us. Tim, thanks for the use of your laptop. And thank you, guys, for your extra time and good questions.
We'll catch up. We're not. That's really interesting.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Yeah. Is this related? Same stuff, right? What would we say we discuss that at a future meeting?
I think after the, once they pass that legislation.
I think there was another thing as to whether or not we were going to ask the town to address some of the numbers, right?
Oh, and then, yeah.
Some of the other areas.
There were two things that we were being asked.
And also, before the legislation gets passed, to... And also, before the legislation gets passed to decide as a board if we wanted to send a letter, not necessarily, but even just a letter of support for the legislation.
Well, that, we could, could we discuss that tonight? This was on the agenda, and if you want to just make that decision now? Do you think we need to do this at another time?
I think we should put it on the next agenda.
Okay, let's put it on the agenda.
Let people think about it and also get a draft letter that we, yeah.
So, there's two things, right? It was the, are we going to support?
Right.
The town-wide thing.
Yeah.
And then, the other one was, what I think they were saying, we need to, would need to be a warrant in town meeting in the spring.
Yeah.
Is raising it to 58,000 and lowering the interest rate.
Okay. It doesn't have to be at our next agenda because it'd be after this special town meeting that we do that and get ready for that.
Correct.
Right. On the agenda in the near future.
What's the timeline?
Coming soon to.
You said all warrant articles?
November 15th.
No, but for, no, for the spring town meeting?
Yeah, November 15th.
Oh, really?
We want, we want.
That's true.
Notice that.
Notice that it's coming. Yeah, that you're going to see.
The actual articles by the end of January, but we want to know, a heads-up that.
Yeah.
What the ask is going to be.
I think we should get a recommendation from the Tax Advisory Group to notice what it's going to cost.
Yeah.
So, Tim, can you get us a recommendation from the Tax Advisory Committee?
Yes.
For that?
And I suppose they would.
For our next meeting, so that.
And they would be the ones to recommend a warrant article to make that change. Is that right? Or no? They just gather the data?
They, and the, you know, council on aging, I would say in tandem.
Yeah.
Would probably be doing that.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to do the contract later? We can skip to the review of the planning, the personnel requests, since I see people from various boards here. We can circle back. So, Tim?
Okay. You had given both the Board of Health and the Planning Board the opportunity to present additional information in connection with their personnel change requests. You had voted to pass five or six previous requests onto the Personnel Board, and they're working on those. They hope to get them done by the October 15 deadline. These are two that initially you declined to pass onto the Personnel Board, but these boards asked for additional time to make their case to you. So, I know we've got Linda here and some of the members of Board of Health, and I saw George. Oh, he's over there with some Planning Board members. So, got Board of Health on the agenda first, so we'd like to hear from, hear from them.
Board of Health first.
Yeah, I think that's, you were.
Making standard, the.
The lecturing. Hi.
This is, this just came in tonight. It's one of the attachments, the materials that we submitted. Arup Maury, she's a public health nurse in Boise. She's also president of the Mass Health, Public Health Nurse Association.
Thanks.
So, on behalf of the Board of Health, thank you. And this position is very important to the Board of Health, but we hope you'll see that it's also important to the town. And I have with me tonight Tricia McGee. And she has been our public health, part-time public health nurse under the grant-funded pilot program. So, we've completed one year, we are moving into our second year. So, what we are asking for tonight is funding for FY22, right, July 22. And I think that I can speak for the board and say that the board recognizes that whenever you're adding a new position to your personnel system, you have to be very careful. You have to scrutinize it because there are other competing interests, and the Board of Health is aware of that. And I think if you consider the Board of Health's history, you'll see that they've always been very fiscally responsible, no budget overruns. Our last staffing request was 2015. So, keeping that in mind, even though the nurse would be housed under the Board of Health, I think the position needs to be seen as a town position because it's a very multifaceted type of position that would deal with many of the community issues, not just specific to Board of Health. And you have what Tricia has been working on for the past year. And the purpose of it was to collect the data so that we could make this argument to you of the benefits of a public health nurse to Carlisle. And we think they've been very measurable and just excellent. Feedback we've been getting has been excellent. Residents have really appreciated having someone that they can go to with not only medical but non-medical questions. Public health nurse doesn't diagnose or treat, but kind of fills in the gaps between the resident's concern and their primary medical care. So, it's not intended to replace primary care, it's intended to supplement it. As an example, Tricia has met with the Director of EMS. And there are cases that don't warrant a trip in the ambulance to the hospital, but that they feel could use some kind of intervention, some additional follow-up, some additional care, so that there isn't an eventual trip in an ambulance to the hospital. So, those are the things that we're looking for. We're also looking for education. We want to educate the community, so, about healthy behaviors so that we can avoid critical cases in the future. And right now, we're working on a collaborative grant with Bedford and Concord on vaping education. And we are going to be working with the school to bring in a middle school curriculum on the risks of vaping. We're going to bring in a speaker. So, well, it's nice to educate the community about healthy behaviors. So, what do you do about the people that are experiencing or, you know, doing bad behaviors? How do you help them? So, you can warn people about vaping, but what about the students, even at the high school, that are already addicted to nicotine? You need someone to help them to get off, you know, to stop using the products. So, that's where the public health nurse would fit in. I think I've pretty much covered, this would be a part-time position, non-benefited. We are calculating about up to 10 hours a week. And we would look to you to support the program and to move it forward under your new personnel policy. It will go to the Personnel Board, they'll review it. And then, if you agree, move it on to the Finance Committee for FY22. I hope you have maybe some questions for Tricia or her take on it or.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions, comments?
I have a question first, not jumping to questions for you, but what's the estimated cost of those 10 hours?
So, for the first year, we funded it at $10,000. And that gave us seven to eight hours a week. And we pretty much ran out of that by the end of August. We got a slight extension under that grant, so we're going to continue it. And then, we applied for and received a second Concord Community chess grant. And so, that's going to carry us through the balance to 2020. So, we are thinking around between $10,000 and $15,000 is what we would kind of target for an annual cost.
And are there no other grants available?
And we would be happy to apply for grants. This is very similar to what we did with the social worker. Initially, it started fully grant-funded until we really proved that we need this person. And I think we'll feel the same way about the public health nurse. And it may, there may be a way to supplement the cost, or we may have to say, we can only spend this much. So, we'll look at the workload and make sure we're prioritizing how the nurse, whether it's Tricia or someone else, would do the work. Part of it is individual care, but part of it is community education. So, we would have to strike a balance.
I have a couple of questions. So, how many of the people that you feel that you helped in some way were over, say, 55 or 60? How many were older?
Oh.
All of them?
Yes.
And that wasn't, that's not because that was the target community? That's just because who sought the services?
Exactly.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean that I'm, you know, pigeonholed into that, you know, age group. But it's who it was given to me by Angela or whoever, can you check on someone? And then, I do that. I've been a home care nurse with Emerson for 23 years, so I've been doing this for a long time. I'm the public health nurse for Lincoln and Concord as well. And so, this, especially this past year, Lincoln just added this position as to Concord. So, this past year, it was all three towns, and then I am the, I am the one person between the three. So, it was really good coordination, which I really enjoyed between the towns. Going forward, emergency preparedness is really on our front burner, especially, you know, each town kind of has a different focus. Town of Concord is, we're really working to reestablish the MRC, Medical Reserve Corps. And if we could do a regional one, it would be stronger. So, it's been, it's been, it's been a great year. I can tell you the residents are so appreciative of the services, particularly nowadays when people are so used to convenience, right? I can come to their house, they don't have to go, they do have to go to the doctor, but if they have a question, I can be that liaison. I can call the doctor and say, I'm here with XYZ, and I have some concerns. So, they appreciate that instead of just going to ER or just going to the doctor without kind of me being that middle person. I have the experience, so I'm familiar with that. But, you know, we also, I actually shouldn't say the, when you're talking about the age. So, we did a TIC program with the Carlisle Summer Fund Program, right in there, four. But most of the people that I worked my magic with are the older adults that are falling through the cracks, want to age in place, and just need a little more assistance.
And that usually came, those folks were identified for you by the COA generally?
Correct.
So, what was the COA doing in the past with these, with concerns like this? Do you know? I mean.
I think, you know.
They probably had maybe access to visiting nurses or through their primary care, but not quite enough. Remember, we got short of hospital stays, people are being discharged early or and sent home. And particularly with elderly, I think one of the things we've learned is managing medications, you know, is difficult for them. And sometimes having someone like Tricia, who has the medical knowledge and then the personal touch to just kind of keep them on track.
They were falling through the cracks, right? So, you can't just call, you can't, so, you know, I work for Emerson Home Care. You just can't call and say, can you go check on Mary? There has to be a skilled need. And so, the skilled need is, you know, IV or wound care or whatever. But I can be like the step below that to say, huh, maybe you do need that. Then I can make a referral for skilled need to the doctor. So, I found it invaluable, and the residents were thrilled.
We also ran an Ask the Nurse program, where anyone could stop by town hall with their questions. And as with any pilot program, it takes a lot to get off the ground. And so, we didn't set our expectations too high the first year, but I think there were a lot of successes in what I found interesting, continuing relationships. And that's what you want. As someone said, the public health nurse is seen as a friend. And, you know, they really do develop relationships. And we're hoping to build that into the, well, the school population in the sense of, yes, you have your school nurses, but sometimes it's the family that's in need, not just the student. And so, how do you help that family? And this doesn't replace, you know, the personal responsibility of the families and their own medical providers. It's just to help out.
Yeah, so, just a couple of questions. You know, you mentioned the clinics, and you stayed here. So, thank you for pulling this together. It's actually quite nice. You know, you say you service 25 residents, with, you know, some residents coming back multiple times, which I think is great. How long were these clinics? I mean, ultimately, you know, just because you were here a short period of time, right? So, was a clinic like an all-day thing? How many days were you here?
Oh, heavens, no.
Were you here a day? Was it?
The Ask the Nurse program?
Yeah, so I guess, like, in terms of.
One hour.
So, okay.
Once a month, one hour.
Okay, and were you here, so that's a pretty good turnout for. So, was it only advertised through COA? Because I actually, I didn't really.
It was in the mosquito.
Okay, okay. I don't really read the mosquito much, because I'm involved in all these freaking meetings anyway. So, I usually live it. But, but no, so I think that's actually good turnout. You know, one of the things that I was thinking too is maybe if we get even just more outreach, you know, maybe we'll have, you know, more participation. But also too, so what happens in, you know, if somebody has a question, you know, outside of those seven, eight hours, right? Do they call Linda? Do they call COA? Does it get back to you? You know, how long does somebody have to wait in order to get a response or?
If I get a call from Angela and someone is, has a question or needs me, like, that day, I'm around. And so, I kind of balance my time between the three towns. But, you know, if it's emergent, obviously, they're going to go to the doctor or. Or EMS. Yeah, they can't wait for the next week. If they have a question about my medications, absolutely call me. I can go to their house, they can meet me here, we can go to Benfield or what, wherever.
So, this won't replace EMS?
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's not intended to be 24/7.
No.
Right.
You don't have to wait for that one hour, one time a month to ask me a question.
Right, that's more my question is that, right? Is, you know, I mean, you know, are we truly limiting the service by limiting the hours? You know, not that I'm saying we should make this full-time thing. But, you know, I just, that those hours are being used efficiently.
A lot of it is telephone consultations, too. Tricia has a card, and she will hand it out.
Yeah.
So, half of your time in advocacy and program development, is that something that's quite a shrink? Or is that, what's involved in that?
So, I mean, a lot of that is communication between Angela and residents and planning, like, the TIC program and the summer program.
The vaping program.
The vaping grant program, which is a very hot topic right now, as you've probably heard.
But did it just get banned today?
Did it officially go?
Yes, in the state.
For temporary.
Yeah, for a while. Four months, yeah. So, that's huge news.
But those programs are also Board of Health initiatives. And so, it's complementing our staff in providing that.
And we do, we, Emerson Home Care does the communicable disease follow-up with the state. So, that is, you know, follow-up on tick-borne, food-borne illnesses. So, that's a part of this job as well.
And what we currently have is Board of Health has funded for the communicable disease reporting and a senior flu clinic. And that's already in the Board of Health budget, comes to about $800 or $1,000 maybe. We would combine that into one, and the public health nurse would take over those duties, which currently are contracted separately to Emerson Home Care.
But I do. So, it's like, it's several, it's several, right? So, it's just like, get this together.
You're saying there might be some savings on that side?
We would keep, no, we would retain that money, but use it to help fund the position. So, it would be one line item for the Board of Health. The duties would all be combined into one.
Well, I want to thank you for the effort and the additional information because the first pass was so generic, it was really hard to tell. I mean, it was, and your report was certainly eye-opening. I mean, it was, and your report was certainly eye-opening and, for me, anyway. So I want to thank you for sending all this information. I think it was important for us to see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to decide on this? I, I don't see why we can't decide this one right now.
We got a year and, well, just. We got a year.
I understand, but, no, no, no.
We're just sending it to the personnel.
That we decide whether we send it on personnel. And I, I feel it's now right.
Could I just jump in and say, if, if the vote is to move it on to the Personnel Board, they're going to want to see a job description that they can grade.
Yes.
Place the position in, in the appropriate pay band. So depending on what pay band it ends up in, that may affect, well, will affect the number of hours that, that the position can.
The number of hours or the amount per hour?
Well, it would affect the rate, but if, if the desired amount was ten or fifteen thousand, depending on what the rate is, you could either get more or fewer hours out of the position.
Right, okay. Do you think that this was adequate?
No, it's in the, it's in the format, yeah.
It is in here.
Yeah, just wanted to get to the part that they're going to grade it and they're going to say, this should be, you know, from A to B and then.
Then we have another hack at it, you know?
Yeah, mm-hmm. And, and all of these are going to come back to the Board at the end of October.
Right.
So this doesn't imply that you strongly support any, any request at this point.
No, but it just.
It's just that you, you're.
I think we need to.
Referring it to personnel to be evaluated.
And move, we forward the request for the public health nurse to the Personnel Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say a couple of things. You know, one is, you know, amazing job. I'm really, really, you know, happy that we had this pilot program. I would be very, very supportive of going for another grant. But I, I really worry about using grants to prove the need for a role because there's lots of roles that are out there that would be good to have, but it's, can we afford it? And, you know, what is the relative priority of that for other things? If I look at, you know, we, we have a lot of personnel requests that have been put before us. And I just don't see how we can possibly afford them.
I think when we get them back would be the time to weigh one against the other, but I don't think we can do that.
Well, I think part of this, though, was to try to make sure that we weren't sending, just forwarding on all the personnel requests to the Personnel Board and they do all the work and then we don't support them. And so I, I don't support this. I, I fully support going for some more grants, continuing to do it if possible. And I don't support sending it to the Personnel Board.
Okay. You want to continue the discussion or do you want?
I, I mean, I thought we, we held up before because we didn't have sufficient information about the scope of the, of the job. I think we, we received that, so I think we're now, I'm prepared to send it forward.
I am too. I think there's a segment of our population that are paying taxes to go support, that support a lot of this sort of thing for another segment of the population and feel, are feeling increasingly that they're not getting what they need from their taxes and this is what they would need. And I think we would be remiss in not giving them the service, giving them much opportunity to get the service. Anyway, we have a motion on the table to forward and, and a second. And we've had some discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of forwarding?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Nay.
Okay. We have a second.
Second request to the Planning Board. We're just hearing mail-in from the Planning Board.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Madeline Blake. Carlton Road, and I'm a member of the Planning Board. And George Mansfield is with me to help present this. I'm in a little bit of a funny position here because our acting chair, Jonathan Stevens, wasn't able to be here tonight. He's a strong proponent of this and our board voted four to one to bring this back to you. I myself probably would have been a no vote. So I'm here to answer any questions there, but I have George here to give the information on this, the back, the background.
Well, you should have in your packets the information that was sent to you last week, as well as the original requests, the original request dated August, August first, I guess it was, twenty, twenty nineteen, from the, at that time, the Vice Chair, Jonathan Stevens. He's now the acting chair since Pete Gambino resigned as of September sixth. I think one thing that you should consider here, and I guess we're kind of last in line in this case, because everything else has been acted on in one way or another. This has been a very difficult time for the Planning Board. It's a time of transition. Part of that transition is really good. In fact, probably most of it, and we hope most of it is. But it's a difficult time because both the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board have submitted their resignations this summer. And they are two of the longest-serving members of the Board. And they are also two of the most active members of the Board. And despite coming in after the Epi Klein's presentation and the State's presentation and hearing about the, the risk factors of retirement, I have been speaking about retirement for at least three years and actually was making a request back in twenty fifteen to cut back my hours so I could stay in the position longer because I really enjoy what I'm doing and I think what I can do for Carlisle is important. And I've been able to do that, but at the same time, work, the work demands themselves have been increasing, probably more so than any time in the twenty, almost twenty-four years that I've been here. And secondly, we are embarking on a very major master plan development phase with a very good consultant, I believe, and a very good master plan steering committee, as, as well as the Planning Board, as well as the forty-member advisory committee, which is incredible. But all those things mean that looking forward to twenty twenty-one, it's, you know, it's kind of a crystal ball. You don't know exactly what you're, what you're planning for in terms of the operation of the planning function of the town or who is going to be carrying that out. But we have to make some decisions now about the positions that we think are necessary to carry that out. And this request is both my and Pete Gambino's and Jonathan Stevens' best guess as to what we will need come July twenty twenty and going through that next year or more. Also, one thing that you didn't ask for and therefore we didn't give you, but I'll, I'll say this because you were talking numbers, we weren't looking, because I understand that you're really not, this is not the budgetary time. This is the position time, Personnel Board time. But we did do a calculation on what the proposed increase in hours. And this is not a new position. This is not a reclassification of a position. It's simply additional hours, which we believe are necessary or we expect will, they're, they're necessary right now. We can't get them right now, but they, they really need, need to be. Particularly in going out and hiring someone to replace me, I think we have to have a strong support on the part of the town to get a good person in, a good, experienced and competent person in to, to take on that role. I think, I think the role will be attractive. I think, you know, I would, I'd love to come to a town when, when, at a time when they were just embarking on or in the process of a master planning effort. But the, what we have calculated, strangely enough, it's very similar to what you heard from the Board of Health. In order to bring both of our current part-time positions to full-time, in one case, ten hours, in the other case, two hours, in twenty twenty-one dollars, now projecting ahead, assuming maybe a two percent annual cost of living increase, it would cost about fifteen thousand six hundred dollars. So I don't know what else you want me to say except to ask questions about the information you have.
What, well, one of the issues that continually comes up in this board is succession planning, but that doesn't seem to be addressed in your classification at all.
The primary reason that I, I guess I'm not really opposed that I'm still deciding about this, I'd like us to have more process at the Planning Board level. I'd like to see us form a subcommittee for possibly the next three months with three people to not only look at what the workload has been for the past three to four years, but to try to think ahead. How's the work going to change? Are we still going to be doing large developments with, there's not that many large parcels of land left? The State keeps talking about changing the threshold to vote in a zoning change from two-thirds to a half. Is that, if that happens, is there going to be a groundswell of interest in having a lot of zoning law changes? And I would like us to, to be thoughtful about that and to think, something that Nathan was just talking about, the core functions of this job are to, to process the applications that we get. By statute, we have to do that. But there's additional functions, participating in grants, other initiatives in town, and to think about, where do we want to draw the lines around this position? Do we want to just do our core functions as best we can and focus on that and do them well? Or do we want to seek grants so that we can pursue other things that would provide more services to town, but will cost more? I'd also like to see us undertaking initiative to try to identify ways to streamline our processes and be more efficient. We've got a couple of years with accessory apartments under our belt now. Maybe there's a way to make that easier to process, easier for people to do. I don't know. Maybe there isn't. But I would like us to undertake that effort. And it's, it's just my personal opinion, I guess, that my understanding of this is that we're on a fast timeframe because of the budget, that we don't necessarily need to be on that. Even if we all sit here and have agreement that the succession plan should be for a full-time planning director, we don't know at what point in the year the person would start, what rate they'd be paid at. So we can't, like, put their salary in and plan for it a year and a half in advance. So I'm not sure that the value from acting quickly outweighs the value that we'd get from a little bit more of a deliberative process. And partly that, I have to say, is, is just the transition that we've had.
I guess part of it is when Pete initially came to this board and asked. I think, I think Nathan and I were the only ones on the board at that. But we emphasized, you know, we don't want this to just be George's hours drop, Gretchen's hours go up, you know, and, and ultimately, at some point in time, we're going to bring somebody in, in George's position. Or George would come back and those hours would go up and we'd keep it kind of status quo. We wanted, I mean, we've been pushing succession plans for Board of Health, CONSCOM, and you guys for three years, you know, and, and it's a little disappointing that that hasn't happened.
I'm not sure what you want for a succession plan. You want us to tell you the structure that we want for the board? I mean, that's what I'd like to do.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, you know, we, okay, so I, I think every, every department is going to be limited to two resources. You know, you're going to be limited to an administrator and then somebody underneath that administrator, right? And ultimately, if you can get away with an administrative assistant, per se, to help that administrator, great. If not, then just, you know, we need to build that position out more. And, you know, for example, one of the things that we've said to CONSCOM, and I just know this better because I, I was on CONSCOM for six years, is that, you know, we really, the goal would be to have that second position be somebody who could, you know, fill that role when, when the administrator is out. So when George is out, somebody who can really fill that role.
And we have that right now. That actually was taken care of by last year's, actually, that was two years ago, adjustment of, of grade for the assistant position. That works. That works. It's just that there's more of it to do. The level of work is working.
Well, certain things. I, I think it depends on who you ask, right? And ultimately, I think, I, well, I think, and that's the evaluation that we truly need.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that I'm there day to day. And that's why, you know, if you ask people who aren't, they may have different, different answers. But it is working. It's just working at a level where we can't do things as well as we would like to do them because we don't have time to do it.
Yeah, well, that's what we hear from Board of Health and that's what we hear from CONSCOM too.
That's true. I mean, I think, I agree.
Right, right.
We should exchange information upstairs and we.
No, exactly. And, but, but also too, it's, it's really, you know, we, I think we've asked each board to really come back with a true solution and nobody really has. You know, I mean, we can't tell you how to structure your, your group, your, your board, right? You know, because you guys know and the board knows better than anybody, the functions that you do, you know, the two positions that you truly need. I mean, if you think you can get away with, you know, the, the two people that are there now, then justify that, you know? But ultimately too, you know, you're going to retire at some point, much like silly's going to retire, Linda's going to retire.
I'm going to retire before the fiscal year we're talking about starts. That'll.
Okay. So then I think we got to get to this a little quicker.
That's the problem.
Right, but, but, well, okay. So then, I mean, I guess the succession time is, no.
But I have to.
But this is what we wanted to avoid.
It's not that, this hasn't been discussed. Particularly Pete and I discussed that a lot. But he was also focused on getting the master plan program started. He was also focused on personnel, his own business and so forth. And it just, it never, you know, never made a decision.
And so I think one of the things about the planning of this is, you know, do, do we add hours to roles now? Or do we think about what might be needed in order to attract a successor to George, right?
I want to be clear, this isn't a request to adding hours now. It's only adding hours in fiscal twenty, twenty-one.
We understand that.
Yeah.
But when we say now, we mean.
Now, now is.
My head is already in July of next year.
Yes.
Because that's what we're talking about, yes, July of next year, right?
Yeah.
And so, so this is, this is making your position full-time thirty-five again and Gretchen's position?
Mine was never thirty-five, but yes. It was thirty-two.
And what are you now?
Twenty-five.
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 So it's a twelve additional hours between the two positions. I'll just, as somebody new to the board and, and new to this whole process, I have to say I, I am appreciative of the, Madeline, of your comments about wanting to really analyze what is the workload and are there ways to streamline and, you know, really what is needed in terms of staffing? And I, I don't know what the, you know, what, what happens? Should we not have made a change in the staffing? If we leave it as is and, and then we get to next year and we're looking to hire somebody? But it seems to me we ought to, unless, unless others say, no, we've already been through this and we know that this is what we want, it's a, it's a really reasonable approach.
It, it seems to me, though, like, if we're going to have to hire a new administrator next year, what they ask, what, what the discussion should be is, what is that going to cost? How is that going to look? And understand that piece of it and how we're going to try to fill George's shoes. And because that may dictate some of what we can do with that other role. Because I know when we increased Gretchen's role, we softened the blow of that because you were reducing your hours. This is going to full-time on both of them. But we don't, you know, I, I don't know, like, what is it going to take for us to attract a planning administrator here? What is that going to look like from a cost perspective?
That, that, we can't know until we set a, a number and a job description and.
And I'm saying we should do that. That's exactly what I'm saying we should do.
Yeah, I agree. And this is not it.
Yeah, and we should do it really, really soon so that we understand what to put in the budget. And we should focus on that.
I agree.
Yes, so that would be recommending that the Personnel Board look at what, what we would put up as a salary and a job description for a new.
Recommending that the Planning Board do their, what Madeline was proposing, basically.
And come back with a.
And coming back with a job description.
Job description and a cost.
And the cost for the succession.
And I think in our heads, we have to be, kind of know that there's probably going to be some kind of a budget impact on this. I have no idea what it is right now.
Yes.
Right.
Well, and we always kind of assume that, you know, in these transition years when, you know, the current administrators decide, you know, there is going to be some sort of transition period and that's just going to be a cost that we have to.
Exactly.
We have to absorb, you know?
Yeah.
There are, of course, two seats on the Planning Board that we don't know who's going to be sitting in them.
That's true, too.
As well, so...
Well, let's get cracking on that.
Believe me.
Yeah, no.
That's up to the people in the town.
Yes, no, no, no.
I think we just randomly select right now.
Yeah. No, but I, I mean, I'm sure you're already working hard on that on the Planning Board, so. A lot to do, yes, yes.
So...
Does that put us, Planning Board, can we appoint for the rest of the year?
We'd have to do a joint...
Or do we have to have a special election?
No, no, no. No, you appoint, you appoint. Once, once the Planning Board officially notifies you of vacancies, which will happen next week when the Planning Board meets, there's a joint meeting has to be scheduled. One week's notice has to be given of the joint meeting. And then the two boards together, the remaining members of the Planning Board and your board, five and five, can meet together and appoint.
Make an appointment.
Yes.
But, but the key thing is having people who are willing to, yes, accept the appointment.
And we have to wait for the Planning Board to tell us that the vacancies are there?
Yes, you do.
Even though we've already accepted the resignations?
The Planning Board hasn't yet notified you. They have 30 days from the resignation, each resignation.
Jonathan's right here and we have...
Gambinos.
Yeah, we got that.
Jonathan's effective October 3rd, I think.
But the Planning Board has to do an additional step.
The Planning Board is going to take that step next Monday night. You'll get notification next week.
If they don't, you can make an appointment.
If they don't, then we could make the appointment on our own.
Only one of the two, because that's the only one because a month will run out.
Well, let's, let's send it to the board and...
It's not going to happen. They're going to notify you.
Let's move ahead.
Yes. Okay, so we have, we need a motion here about this particular...
All right.
Packet.
Did everybody get Peter Yell's letter that he sent?
Yes, it's on our table.
Well, what we're doing is we're, we're going to not approve sending this proposal to the Personnel Board, right?
You're making that motion?
Well, I'm, I'm just, that's my question, is that what we need?
You can do it either way.
You can do it either way.
Okay.
We can vote in a, we can say it in the affirmative and vote no.
Against it, or we can say it in the negative and vote yes.
This, this, I think we probably should do it as, I, I move that we vote to move the position onto the Planning Board for additional hours for planning administrator and assistant. And then, and then we vote appropriately, because that's what this was, right?
Exactly. So we have a motion made by, now by Nathan.
Oh, okay. Unintentional motion, but there it is.
I'll second it.
And Luke seconded it. Is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry, so what is our motion saying?
If you don't want to do it, you say nay.
Yeah.
If I don't want it to go to the Personnel Board.
Right.
Okay.
Because we, the motion was to send it to Personnel.
Okay, thank you very much.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
That was, okay, good discussion.
Other Board of Health addition?
Yep.
It just said public health nurse.
Right.
Planning Board.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, so there's no other Planning Board, Board of Health.
The other Board of Health was, was previously for the Personnel. That's already in front of us.
Already went, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, Linda's already met with the Personnel Board on that.
Okay.
All right, we have the two chiefs here whom I assume are here for the special town meeting warrant discussion.
David, too.
And David, yes.
Bill.
And Bill.
Oh, he's a figurehead.
Bill's a silent partner. Silent partner.
So done.
Did you turn the heat down?
Or maybe it's just that location, geez. I was sweating earlier.
I haven't made that investment yet, so. So, David Friedman Hutchins Road, the Apecto Coordinator of the Working Group that is working on the Public Safety Communication System implementation since the 2017 annual town meeting authorization and appropriation. And we are here to ask for the Selectman's support for Article Five at the Special Town Meeting on October 7th.
All right.
And supplied with... A range of materials over the last several meetings, one document just prior to this meeting. And happy to answer any questions you have. Before doing that, I, I sort of want to, sort of be clear that, as we said when we first came to you in May, which was very soon after we got the communication through Town Council that the, about the lease issues, we came to you within a couple of weeks of that, having miraculously found the alternative site and asked your permission to investigate that site in order to find out whether it was viable because we knew there were wetlands on the site. But we were clear at that time that although the red flag was the unexpected commercial or close to commercial rate lease rental, that the core problem was with the leases themselves and the lack of control over the site. We met last night with the Finance Committee and the five members that were there voted unanimously to support this article. They basically stated that and, and we agreed completely that it's, the standard in Carlisle to have budget items be done at annual town meeting should be met at all costs. And that they basically concluded that were this to come as part of everything else, this would be one of the, if not the, top priority item then. And therefore, they, you know, viewed it as okay in the same way that they did on the elevator at the school that, you know, I think Scott Triola said sometimes these things just come up and need to be dealt with. And they agreed that this was that, but they're going to be clear, I believe through a statement at town meeting, that, you know, this plus, and I don't know how much the elevator was, but whatever that dollar amount is, that as far as they're concerned, that's already part of the 2021 budget and that money is already appropriated. And, you know, everybody coming in between now and the close of the warrant and the close of the budget is going to be looking at a, you know, whatever the percentage of tax rate they want to look at, but is going to be looking at a, an amount that's reduced by those things. But that they agreed, you know, in, in talking to them, sort of went back over the history of this project and, you know, they supported, and I believe the Selectmen have supported every step of this process, even back to the reappropriation of the $150,000 for the original tower that was proposed at the school and reallocating that to the study that was done that recommended that we have a Public Safety Communication System and particularly the 2017 appropriation for this project. And that essentially, if the FinCom and if the Selectmen believe that public safety and providing proper communications, which is the sort of number one requirement for public safety people in the field, that if it was appropriate to provide, to vote to appropriate three million, just under $3 million for that in 2017, not supporting this essentially undoes that work and, and is sort of stepping away from that commitment. So we also think, you know, the, the 2017 vote was not quite unanimous. There were maybe, the mosquito said there were a handful of no votes. But, you know, it is our sense that the community, nothing's changed in the community in terms of understanding of the importance of this and, and providing our first responders with the tools they need to do their jobs safely and to protect lives and property in the community safely. So we hope that you will follow in FinCom's footsteps and vote to support this.
All right. Any questions?
Time and time again.
Okay. So we need to vote on our articles.
Each one individually?
I think we should vote on them individually.
I move the Board of Selectmen support Article Five for special town meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Thank you. One thing I, I wanted to also mention, I don't know that you necessarily want to deal with this, but one of the butters has indicated that she's going to propose an amendment on the floor of town meeting to limit the use of this tower to just public safety. And if, you know, I don't know that the Selectmen would, you know, sort of take a position in that moment at town meeting. And so the, the con article in last week's mosquito implied that this group had been dodging the question about co-location and also suggested that we had been not honest about the fact that the tower elevation shows two positions below where our antennas are and that clearly that's meant for commercial cellular. And I wanted to be clear to you that that's not what those are showing. This tower is a solid steel tube and cannot take internal antennas. That is what the bylaw requires for commercial cellular. Those sites that were shown on that was what they do as a standard when they're doing these drawings. But for this type of tower, the only thing they would be able to take would be external antennas, which were shown in case any neighboring communities' public safety departments were interested in co-locating on that tower. So there is no presupposed or pre-thought plan to have commercial cellular there. We, as part of the whole process, we looked and, and have had discussions with Concord where we, they are allowing us to co-locate on their Nurse-Nac Tower. And through their support, because the Middlesex Tower that's still in litigation, but they, the, the town of Concord and their public safety has a role there and they're working with us also to be on that tower. We wanted to make that same thing possible, at least for other public safety in neighboring communities. It was something we looked at also at Proctor Road. And nobody's taken it up, us up on it and said, yes, we definitely want to do it. But that's why that was shown there. That said, we haven't, you know, we don't have, you know, our role is to make sure the public safety system gets done. This is a public safety tower. So individually, board members', you know, view would be that it doesn't make sense to limit the, the use going forward. The public safety, the personal safety issues that people have about whether they're cellular here are not based on science, that basically the safety margin for a, I think, a 10-channel commercial cellular thing, putting out 10,000 watts at any distance from this tower is, depending upon where you are relative to it, and it varies. It goes up and then down and up and down. But it's 100, at its lowest amount relative to the threshold that the FCC sets, it's even a 10,000 watt cellular tower at the distance where there is the most exposure, it's 100,000 times more than the limit that the FCC has as a safety limit for this. So it's, it's, it's three orders of magnitude or four or five orders.
Less.
100,000, less, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
What is this point?
100,000 times lower than the threshold at, I think it's at some distance away. At the base of the tower, it's like a million times more.
Less.
Less.
Well, that's because they go out this way, they don't go straight down. So that's why you're actually sheltered.
There's a point where it goes up slightly, but even at the, the greatest...
Another way of saying it is that it's way less than their cellphone that they've got in their pocket, which is radiating right into their skin.
Dramatically less. And, and basically the FCC is the only sort of health concern is for someone who's working at that. So from a health concern, there's no reason for the Selectmen to take a position that we would restrict this. And I would also want to point out two other things. One is that one of the reasons that we're having the issues we're having at 1022 is that it was the first tower that we permitted in town. And the bylaw was written very restrictively to try to limit everything to 80 feet. And it was limited to no more than one 10-foot extension. And even public safety had to be within the monopole, which I was chair of the Planning Board and didn't know at the time that public safety antennas don't work inside a monopole. But to some degree, the restrictions that we self-imposed on that because of a better concerns at that time have limited our ability to move, to move this forward. You know, and the other thing I would say is our wireless bylaw that doesn't affect public safety, but would apply to any extension to this for commercial cellular, sets up what the preferred types of facilities that the town would like to see. And the second to lowest of those preferred is, actually, the third to lowest of those is co-locating on a existing tower. Below that is building a new tower on town land. And below that is building a new tower on private property. So that by voting or taking a position to support that motion, essentially what you're doing is going against the intent of the bylaw, which is to limit more towers, et cetera, et cetera. So if you were to take a position on it, those are the reasons why it, that, you know, there's no basis, aside from the potential revenue for the town, which could be...
Public safety, I'm assuming we wouldn't have any...
No, no, if you, no, but if, once it's built, once it's built, it's an existing tower. And you, no, I didn't mean for helping out our public safety in another community. I said if an extent, if somebody came to the town and the town was interested in leasing an extension to this, the town could, you know, perhaps get significant revenue. And again, that's not part of what we're proposing, just...
But we shouldn't cut...
If you...
Our options.
Yeah.
Especially when it's not science-based.
Yes.
Yeah, and just a quick question, David. The description of this particular cell tower and it's, and the limits on it, have you gone over that with the butters?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I, we, I made myself available to them. Well, no, I, since Nancy wrote her article, I have not spoken, I thought perhaps she would be here. There have been a couple of times when she has made statements that I sat down with them and explained that those were not true statements and they continue to make those statements. So I, you know, I can reach out to Nancy and explain to her that those two slots do not mean what she thinks they mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
I think it'd be useful to pass that on.
I would have appreciated before putting that over that she'd come to, to me and said, what do these things mean? And I could have given her that answer instead of jumping to the conclusion that we've basically been lying about it.
I'd also recommend that for town meeting, you come with the actual data on that that you talked about earlier on, on the safety level.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it...
Just in case.
Yes. I mean, the, the amount with which it's below the concern is so great.
But also we're not proposing this for cellular.
Yeah.
There will be a separate decision made at the... If there is an amendment proposed, we should be prepared with that.
Yes, yeah, right. The amendment would be to preclude... Yes. Yeah, right. The amendment would be to preclude any ever, you know, and I think that would be short sighted of us.
Especially if the tower's going to last 50-plus years.
Yeah.
Why would you restrict the town?
Absolutely.
Anyway, thank you for your vote and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, one last thing. At the last meeting, when you set the date for this, right after that, I pointed out that the, that date was going to be a good date to do the public info session on the complete streets.
Yes.
And the mosquito has reported that, that what I had said was that we were going to do a public info session prior to October 7th about the public safety, which we're not planning on doing. So just to the degree anybody's paying attention, there was a conflation of those things. The public info session is about the.
Complete streets.
Complete streets.
Which is sort of about public safety, but at a different.
Anyway, but I, you know, unless you felt that there was some need for us to do, I mean, all we would do is do the town meeting presentation ahead of time and.
We've already been through the planning board public.
Yes, we, yes, we have. Oh, the other thing I would like to know is that.
You guys are better off just walking because he's just going to keep going.
This is, I, I want to be as transparent and clear about everything so that, you know, anytime anything isn't said, I get grief for it. So. The ConScom order of conditions was appealed.
Yes, oh, yeah.
And Tim has reached out to DEP and it's, there's a good chance that we'll have their decision prior to the town meeting.
That would be good.
That would be good. And anybody that's looked at it, who has been through these things, is quite confident that.
So, and a butter appealed it, or?
Butter appealed. Anyway, is quite confident that whatever DEP comes back with, it's not going to keep us from being able to do this.
All right. Good. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. We have some other articles. We might as well.
Yep.
Do those at the same time.
Last night, the Finance Committee voted to support all of the articles. However, they, they did ask regarding Article One, if the board would consider not moving that at this town meeting, instead waiting until the annual town meeting in the spring to make the budget adjustment. You'll recall, this is the article that would adjust the vocational education budget, because we found out over the summer, we had three students going to Miniman instead of two. Priscilla's been unable to get financial information out of Miniman, so we don't have the numbers right now. So Finance Committee would prefer to wait until the spring when we know what the actual shortfall is and by means of a transfer handle it then. So that if the board wants to go forward with it, they support it, but they ask that you not move it, respectfully, so.
We can do the same, right? We can support it.
And just choose not to move it.
I think it should still go on the warrant, and we can choose not to move it. But we can't do either if something happens between now and then.
It's on the warrant now.
We've already closed it.
Yeah, the warrant's posted, but you don't have to move it.
We don't have to move it.
Town meeting, just take no action. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move that the board support Article One adjustments to the FY 2020 operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you just say we're going to support it?
Yeah, we're just not going to move it, but we, in case, in case, what if somebody gets up and moves it, right?
Oh, I guess, okay.
Yeah.
Same person that's going to ask the question about the science.
All right. So was there a second to that? I'm sorry. You second it. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We're just not going to move it, right?
And we're not going to move it. Unless there's some reason to move it later. I mean, we never know.
Okay. I move that the board selectmen support Article Two, Acceptance of Fourth Paragraph of Master in Law, Chapter 41, Subsection 111-F, Injured on Duty Indemnity Fund.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Everybody understands what it is? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the board selectmen support Article Three, Department Revolving Funds Bylaw.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the board selectmen support Article Four, Capital Equipment. Total of $93,000.
Yes.
Have I been sleeping? When did this?
Yes, when did this come? I would just.
So, no, this, if you remember, this, this is not actually changing the numbers at all. It's the way it was worded. Town Council wanted us to.
Oh, this is the one that never actually appeared here. It was always just.
Yes.
It was always just. It was always before us last time, exactly as it is now.
Well, it didn't have the table.
Yeah, it did.
Anyway, okay.
But we're not, we're not voting $93,000 more dollars.
No, it's the way it was worded.
We were wording it.
Right.
It wasn't effective the first time.
Second.
It was the two-thirds vote versus.
Yes.
That's right.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we already did number five.
They caught Chief Fisher, so he can speak to Article Two if you wanted to hear from him on the 111-F change.
We understand.
We understand it.
We're already supporting it.
We're already supporting it.
That's good, because I really do appreciate it. I'm sorry I didn't foresee that you should have.
We discussed last meeting.
Of course, yeah. It's very clear.
Because now we do this, well, no one injured for the next day.
Right.
Because by doing this, you're basically insured.
Good, good.
Have a good night. You buy a new snow blower.
It's not going to snow anymore that winter.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Circle back to number four, just make sure we don't forget it.
Do we have to sign something on this? Do we have to pass around something we signed?
No, no, you already signed the warrant.
We've got the signatures, but okay.
I asked, I asked Chief Saros if he would stick around as well. He has an actual request to make of the board, so.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we?
Do that next, and then he can go home.
Let him do that, then.
Sure. Do you want a copy of the articles?
Of the warrant?
Would you like a copy of? Yeah. And so it's, it's, Article Number One is the one that's not going to be moved at the meeting. Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Back. They have copies, or are they?
No, that's actually, not off the press. We don't have copies yet, but we can make them.
That's great. So, okay, so we have the opportunity to have a building for training. We know the Highland Building pretty well. We know the fire station pretty well at this point. We've run lines up, down the stairs, and in and out, and all over the place. It's nice that this won't be broadcast, because this is going to be a surprise.
It is being broadcast.
Well, hopefully, nobody will see it. Hopefully, this will be a surprise.
Probably one person watching.
Yeah. Hopefully, this will be a surprise. But in any case, we have the opportunity to have a building to use, 21-23 Bedford Road. It'll be torn down soon. And so he would, the owner would like us to, well, both on our end, this is a release that he's not going to come after us for the damage we do to his building. But similarly, if we, for whatever reason, had an injury, we would not blame that on, on their building. So that's what this is about.
2123 is the building across from the library.
Yes.
This is a surprise.
You don't plan to light it on fire, do you?
No, so that's, so.
I didn't know the training was coming, but I knew it was coming down.
Yeah, yeah, no, I knew it was coming down. So we will not be lighting anything on fire. So doing that is a whole big process, if we ever do that. That's, that's, that's a whole big process. For us, it's, yeah, it's, it's the ability to, the worst we might do is, is use a smoke machine to just make it not visible. But, but the, you know, ability to take a hose down into basement and put out a flashlight and go, you know, whatever.
Put out a flashlight.
You, you get the idea. But the ability to do a search, a search for people and find them and all of these kinds of things. You know, it's great to do that in a commercial building, again and again and again. But it's also very different to do that in an old house. There's even things like building construction of a building like that is very different than many of the places we can train. So this can be great for us, you know, the ability, they are happy for us to breach walls, you know, any of those kinds of things. And there aren't many places where we get that opportunity, where people say, yes, go ahead, and, you know, plaster and lay, the good, good, solid construction to work in.
Town Council prepared the waiver and release form, so.
Right.
It's embedded through.
And it's just, it's a two-way waiver.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. And when are you thinking about doing this?
Be honest with you, we do second and fourth Wednesdays of every month. In the evening, we do training, which is tomorrow.
Okay.
So one of our problems is that they're, they would like to be on a fairly aggressive schedule to get moving. And so we would like to do, so we may get a couple of trainings out of it, but it's not like we're going to have it for months to work with.
So who's bringing the marshmallows?
Why didn't you say who's bringing the marshmallows?
Bring the kids that'll sit across the street.
Back when we used to be able to do fires, that was very useful, but it's hard to do now. If we ever do it, it's going to be a process.
If you get state permission or?
So everything's to EP to.
That would have so dry.
And then there's a lot of prep you have to do.
Yeah, it's incredible.
All right, well, good.
Thank you.
Oh, really?
Oh, while you're here, we were, we're reviewing policies. And today, tonight, we're going to do mileage reimbursement rate, but, you know, because that's an easy one. But another one is number seven, our ambulance fee in our policy book, I think is from 1989 or something like that. Is there some generic way we could write the policy so that it?
I have not even seen it, so I.
Number seven says, oh, in 77, voted to set the preliminary fee for use of the new ambulance at $45 per trip. And in 2481, voted to raise the ambulance rates to $75 effective March 1st, 1981. That's our policy.
Well, that's not what we're following right now.
Yeah, what are we charging?
If you could.
Over a thousand.
If you could, first of all, we need to know that. I mean, there should be either this or we should take this policy out.
But do we need that policy? That's what I'm.
I mean, you know.
You should just be able to approve the rates, whatever they change.
So, so we're doing it based on the Samara with Pro EMS for, to meet the requirements for paying them for ALS. So we're kind of locked into that structure and.
So.
Been through, and it's not that.
Policy is to set the rate at that structure. So if we could have that, that's how the policy should read. And, and then, so if you could just draft that up for me, for Tim, and then we can stick that in there instead of this.
Yes.
That would really be helpful. Thank you.
That sounds much better.
Okay, so it's kind of more, what it's based on, generic is the wrong word, but you know what I'm getting at.
Very good.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Does this stay here?
Well, so we can.
We can.
It's the intimidation factor.
Yep.
All right. Now, we can go and park, do the parking lot construction contract.
All right, you'll recall that we discussed this somewhat at the last meeting. And we have to defer it to this meeting, since it's a lot of money and usually approve things, yeah. It aren't on the agenda. Valid point. So, and once again, by approving it, the board still kind of holds the keys to the car here, that only under a notice to proceed from the selectmen does the paving project happen. And the understanding is that only happens if the solar project is happening. And the board can terminate the contract for convenience, which is really any, any reason, not for breach or not for anything specific. But if it's in the town's best interest, which if there were no solar project, I think decision, or the FinCom selectmen decided that that would be a no-go for the paving, so. But it sounds like the Ameresco thing is moving along with the planning board, and I talked to George earlier, and, you know, it all looks pretty good at this point, so.
Yeah, and ultimately, the 220 is less than what was actually approved at town meeting, right?
It was 250. Yeah, so.
So that's good.
And they've agreed to hang on to that price, even though our thing, yeah.
But they want to see a contract, so we'll get on the contract and say, this is the price if, if we go forward.
Yep.
And they understand that. They do want to do it right, you know, over the summer after school gets out, which coincides with, maybe Luke will discuss this later, the complete streets schedule is kind of in the same ballpark. So we could have a lot of activity here next summer, but.
A lot of paving.
So I move that the board selectmen vote to award contract to Sunshine Paving Corporation, 89 Meadowbrook Road, North Chelmsford, Massachusetts, in the amount of $220,000, and to authorize the chair or the town administrator to sign contract documents. The work of said contract shall not commence until a notice to proceed has been issued, which is expected no sooner than the spring of 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Another job. Well done. We're down to town government organization policy and bylaw review. As you will recall, at one point, we, a few weeks ago, we got a letter from town council saying that, you know, we had several different ways of operating. And one is, we just could authorize Tim to do various things. And at that point, I think I asked Tim if he could give us, give me a list of things that he thought would be nice to be authorized to do. And what he did was he gave me a letter that he had written in February of 2016 to a previous board, and, which is in your packet. That's this thing, Town Administrator Outline of Administrative Changes. And when I read it, I didn't really see anything in it that I thought wasn't a very reasonable request. And so I thought we could discuss slash authorize our town administrator to do some of these functions for us.
And some of them we're already doing, so.
Some of them, we've already, yes. The one that we're doing is, you know, the.
Which one?
Well, we're working on the personnel policies and procedures. And procurement is already doing.
procurement, recruitment. The administrator, with the respect to approving payroll and time sheets, I do that for almost three departments now. We tried to get it town hall-wide, and three departments resisted. But I do approve the time sheets for the department heads and all of the other departments.
Right.
So I think just take a, maybe a little nudge to get everybody under the same.
Would prevent us from having to also race in.
Right.
So that people can get paid, you know.
Or volunteer board chairs that, you know, always come in to.
Yeah, I do read this over, and I saw nothing in here that gives me any concern whatsoever.
There are a couple of things I just wanted to chat about.
Sure.
One is, in the sense, so overall, I think this is great. There are just two that jumped out at me. One is, in the second bullet, I totally agree with implementing personnel policies and procedures, including discipline, performance evaluation. But in compensation according to approved compensation classification plan, I'm not sure, does that mean that you would be able to, like, move somebody from one grade to another? Or I'm not exactly sure. How often do you do this, anyway? Because don't we just do this once a year?
Correct. It's more working with the personnel board when there's a new, a new position created or a new hire, as far as slotting a person into the chart. So maybe that's not, it's a little imprecise, the language, but.
It reads to me like there's like some, yeah, I would just want to make sure that if there's a change in somebody's compensation, that we were involved in that.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. It's not intended that I would arbitrarily move people around.
According to approved compensation plans.
Yeah, but we approve compensation plans like we did that, like, at the beginning of the year. And so we only do it once. So if it's to the, I guess I'm not sure what, what's being done here. Because once a year, we approve the compensation plan and who's in it.
Right. Right. I think it was more along the lines of the work that I do with the personnel board, and when they create a new position or regrade a position, or someone's hired into a new.
I think the key word here is implement.
Yeah.
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 We approve, we approve the plan and the classification.
Can't change the plan.
According to the approved compensation classification plan.
I can work on rewording it, if that, I mean, it's not intended.
I think the implement is the key.
Yeah.
Well, and I think we'll also be clarifying a lot of that when we're talking, when we finish doing this bylaw, the other personnel bylaw, and procedures. It's the clarifying Tim's position there. So if you want, we could take this one out, if we're going to, like, say, okay, now we're gonna authorize you this, and then we, we can work on refining what he's meaning here in that other policy. But, but that's, but this, the goal is to give Tim more authority in the personnel, you know, and, and not just responsibility, but the authorities to make it clear that people have to come to him, you know, for the, that the chairs of other boards and committees have to come to him to help with the reviews, the annual reviews and things like that, because right now, they don't feel like they have to. So we're trying to.
I'd be totally comfortable with this one if there's a period at the end of the performance evaluations.
Okay.
Just because it's not clear to me what that last part means.
I think that's reasonable.
Just take out the at-end compensation.
Let's just, okay.
We'd have to add an and.
So just take that out, that second part.
And then the second thing is, obviously, I'm focused on money here. The ten thousand dollars, not sure how I feel about all the department heads being able to authorize, I mean, that's a lot of money. I'd prefer to just give that all to Tim.
Oh, gee, well, this is what we're doing now, though. This is how we're currently doing it, right?
Well, we do have procurement policy. That's the minimum threshold under the state procurement guidelines. That you can purchase anything without getting more than one quote, up to ten thousand, ten to fifty thousand, you need to get three.
Individual department heads can't do it, they have to go to you.
They, they can only do it if I authorize them to do it, yeah.
So this makes it sound like, yeah.
That they, that they can do it directly now.
Right.
No, only, only if I, you know.
I presume. It says they can have procurement authority for up to ten thousand, and then you'd have authority over ten thousand for contracts, so you don't, but.
Well, I'd have to look at our, our policy might say that, too, so that, if that's not the intention, the policy would have to be changed, too.
I have the policy here.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can work on that, make sure it's not inconsistent.
Consistent with the Board of Selectmen's policy on procurement of goods and services.
Well, you could just lower, I mean, it doesn't, the state guideline is ten, you could lower the threshold to twenty-five hundred, or five, or any other.
But that's the state guideline for what we've given you.
Right.
My question isn't at all the authority that you have. My, my question is the authority that the individual department heads have.
Okay, well, you could say twenty-five hundred, or fifteen, you know, you could make a difference.
Make it, okay, I agree with you. I thought that was what we were doing now, because, and, and because we, in our, we may not hire them, but the, the person that we are trying to hire, that.
For finance?
No, for, for.
Procurement and projects.
It would be a procurement and grants writer, it would make even more sense to have, not have the individual heads doing their own procurement, since we're gonna have, you know, a sub-procurement officer. It's funny, it's, it's not, uh, I don't see procurement in our policy.
Gotta give all that stuff back, Tim.
That's true.
All right.
I could shoot you a copy of that, that we do have, might not be, have made it into the books, but we do have a procurement policy.
I know, but I don't see it in here.
So, so what, what would you do on this particular one, then, that says about procurement?
Because I think that Tim already has all the authority, and this was delegating some authority to department heads.
Which we don't wanna do.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so that's gone.
I didn't pay much attention to it, because I thought that was how we had it, you know, we were just doing, that wasn't really a change.
All the rest of them, I think, great.
Okay, so.
No, just, just one other thing, yeah, speaking of salaries and compensation and whatnot, you know, we did just, and this might not be a good time to say it with Tim sitting in the room, but we did just renegotiate a contract, a five-year contract with him, and now we're actually throwing more onto his plate, so.
Good thing we did it in that order.
Phew, yeah, yeah.
Right, so, so, you know, but I mean.
Wasn't it smart of us?
Yeah.
Well, you know what, I think we can talk about that in.
Yeah, it's not a discussion, right, it's not a discussion for tonight.
Yeah.
But it's just something that I think we should truly consider, because that would be a not-so-kind thing to do.
Well, on the other hand, I feel that we also, in certain respects, making his job easier, because when you have responsibility with no authority, it makes the job.
No, I agree, I agree.
Possible to do.
I'm not giving anything back, so.
He's always had the responsibility, he doesn't have the authority.
Just has the authority, right, right. But it, I mean, it's gonna create more headaches, it's gonna create, you know, some.
So, do we need?
We'll bring that up as next.
There you go.
Now that we've amicably come to this decision, what do we do with it? How do we codify this and memorialize it, and, you know, so that everybody knows about this?
Just add it to his job description, clearly.
Sure, yeah, I could add to this.
Okay.
We can just put a note on the door.
I'm also thinking in terms of policy, because I want people to understand.
Right.
The policy around it.
Well, maybe it needs to be, you know, we have a meeting with the administrators and the chairs of the boards.
Okay.
I mean, we bring in kind of the key person up.
You know, this public outreach thing? That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that it's important to, I, I would think that it would be important not to focus just on those bullets, but focus more on kinda overall, like, Tim's role.
Yeah.
And, and then say, and, you know, we've added these things to it, but overall, this is Tim's role, and we support him in that role.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Right, and I think it needs to be made clear that you have a hundred percent support of the board to do these things.
Appreciate that.
I guess, you have twenty percent support, I can't speak forever, but you know what I mean? You know, because, again, it's one of those things, if, you know, if you go to implement some of these, and.
Yeah, you get people fluff you off, and we just don't back, it defeats the purpose, so.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So that was one thing under there. Mileage reimbursement rate, yeah, that was one of the ones that, you know, was like at eleven cents a mile, or whatever.
Yeah, I kinda like that, though.
And so, we rewrote it to say, transportation expenses paid or incurred by departments under the authority of the board, or selectmen, of selectmen, shall be reimbursed at the current IRS standard mileage rate.
Which is what, right now?
Even for a Chevy Bolt?
Even for a Chevy Bolt.
Fifty-five or fifty-seven cents.
Thank you.
So are we actually only reimbursing it twenty-two and a half cents right now?
No, what happens every, every January, Priscilla sends out a memo saying, this is the new IRS rate for the year, and everyone uses that, so the practice is.
Let's make it the policy.
Yeah, yes.
The thing is, it was a policy, but it wasn't written like this.
I like this, but I actually like having the historical in there.
I do, too.
Can we just add this down below?
I would, actually, I'm hoping that we get rid of all the historical stuff, but it's up to you.
I like having the historical, it's kind of.
I would like it not to be there, though, because, I mean, I would like the policy book to be clean, so that if you're looking for the policy, you know what the heck. There's another one, there's several in there that have drafts, and then two, you know, other ones, and it's like, you don't know which one you're supposed to be reading. So, as an appendix, how about as an appendix, Nathan?
I would like it typed, like this is.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, actually, we were gonna break out the typewriter in nineteen eighty-two.
So, with your indulgence, I have a list, a bunch, that are also kind of no-brainers like this, that I would like to bring, a couple of, if, every couple, at every meeting, so that we can start. Planning it up. And then for the ones that need more time and review, I think we're gonna start having to have a subcommittee or something, start addressing these things. And, and as well as our town bylaw, which has not been reviewed in the last twenty years, so.
It's like the mileage reimbursement, yeah. Well, town council offered to assist with the bylaw review project, it's.
Yeah.
They're willing to take on under the retainer, so.
Oh, really? Ooh, okay.
So does this mean that now, um, does this mean now I can keep track of my mileage and turn it in for reimbursement?
No.
I was afraid you were gonna say that.
Alan already exempted the bolts, so.
But you can turn it in, just.
Nothing happened to it, it can go into that historical record, right.
Well, the requirement will be that you charge it here, once that charging station is.
Goes in, right, yes.
That'll be your compensation.
Now, the, the last thing under item seven is an employee benefits committee. I would like to start an employee benefits committee. We promised police in our negotiations that we would. More recently, the library has come and asked, made inquiries about paid maternal, maternal leave, or.
Family health medical.
Paid family medical leave. Medical leave. And so I think that should be discussed at the same time, and maybe we need some tweaks to our policy. I noticed our sick leave policy is a hundred and twenty, you can accrue a hundred and twenty days, but it's not clear that, for instance, you could use that as a maternity.
Yeah, like a short-term disability.
So maybe we need to, you know, discuss whether we tweak that or not, so that we don't have to do this other paid thing. We, there's, was that, that wasn't in the packet, or was it?
In my report, there's an advisory from Labor Council.
That's right, in your report, there was an advisory saying, like.
They don't know of any town that has adopted it.
Don't do it, don't do it, so, but, but I think it is something that we wanna talk about, so.
But your idea for this committee is, tell us.
There was a committee at one point.
I think.
Under the Finance Director.
You're right, the Insurance Advisory Committee at one point in time, when Larry Barton was Finance Director. And recently, you know, Bonnie sent out a memo saying we were gonna revive it, and, you know, so we can follow through with that.
We need to revive that.
Yes, yeah.
The other thing we need to revive, by the way, because I did see it in the, when I was rereading, again, the, all the policies, there's an investment trust fund committee, advisory committee. And I haven't seen a hide nor hair of that, either.
Quite active for a while, and then, yeah, you're right, it's been a few years.
So there's a bunch of committees, either we should.
They cleaned out the accounting district.
Yeah, okay, so we should either revive them, or just get rid of them, because it's in, as I said, it's in the policy book, you know, do we have it, do we not have it, do we want it, do we not want it? So, I guess with your indulgence, and if we're in favor of getting this going, once we get a new Finance Director, you know, I will start pushing on that and having that get off the ground.
We essentially committed to it.
Yes, I guess what we would need is just like, what is the charter of it, and what's the makeup?
Right, that's, so if you would be thinking about that, maybe you wanna, I don't know, people have specific ideas that they would like to contribute, and just give them to me, and then once we get the new Finance Director, they could help to draft that as well.
And did we have, did Larry Barton have something that he had brought before the board? You know, a charter for.
Do we have an old charter that we can start with?
I think.
That would be a good place to start.
He called it the Public Employee Committee at the time, but I think we can find the old charter.
I'd like to get, get moving on it, so, because I just don't, these things always take time, and.
We've only got three years.
And we only, I know, I only have one year, I'm up for reelection at the end of.
You're free, please, so you're right.
May, so I'm done.
And the police contract is the drop-dead date on this.
Yes. Oh, yeah, three years for that.
Yeah.
Okay. Appointments and resignations. We have the resignation of Jonathan Stevens.
What's going on in this town where he's moving out?
Oh, I'll tell ya, the other day, I was talking to Sandy Nash, I thought she was still living in that house in the center, and turns out, she's in Concord now, too.
I just got an email yesterday from Claude Van Rogeson, who's moved to New Hampshire, onto the island.
So, wow.
That's why I don't seem jogging around.
I thought he was maintaining both residences.
No, he says he's changed his residence, he's got a New Hampshire driver's license, he's got, he's voting up there.
Yeah, huh.
You just lost one vote, Alan.
Do you want me to make a motion here?
Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the letter of resignation as submitted by Jonathan Stevens, planning board effective October third, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
I accept this resignation with regret and with gratitude for Jonathan Stevens' very valuable service. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just bring us back? Did, did we actually make a motion on the mileage rate and vote?
Oh.
So I move that the Board of Selectmen set the mileage rate to the current IRS standard mileage, or the, the then-current IRS standard mileage rate, and add that to our policies.
Second?
And could we please have a date on all these policies as we accept them? Thank you. I don't care, a lot of those were signed by, you know, whoever it was, I don't think we need that, but a date would be helpful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cemetery deeds.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Jeffrey Freeman and Marjorie Finley of two forty-five Rockland Road, at the Green Cemetery, D-197 Graves, one, two, and three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrator.
First item in my report, we've got a request from Clark Farm Market for one day liquor licenses for events on upcoming Thursday, afternoon, it's Thursday, October third, from four-thirty to six-thirty, and Thursday, October tenth, from five to seven PM. So is this Clark Farm, or is this the garden club?
Clark Farm, right, okay.
This is the market.
Because it says above it, number one says garden club, but that's, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm, you already made the motion, or somebody already moved it?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, nobody moved it.
I move that the Board of Selectmen grant two one-day wine and malt beverages licenses pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section fourteen, to the Jeffrey Freeman of Clark Farm Market, for events to be held at two oh one Bedford Road, on October third, from four-thirty to six-thirty PM, and October tenth, from five to seven PM, subject to the applicant providing a host liquor liability insurance certificate.
Second?
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a request from the Savoyard Light Opera Company to hang their banner across School Street for their upcoming performances of the Music Man.
I move that the Board approve a banner measuring two feet by sixteen feet, to be placed across School Street, opposite the War Memorial, by the Savoyard Light Opera Company, from October nineteenth through November twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Are those dates correct?
No, because up in the thing, too, it says September thirtieth through November fourth.
Oh, whoops. Got it. So it should be probably October twenty-sixth through, oh, no, they want it in advance, it's September.
September thirtieth through November fourth.
It's right here.
September thirtieth to November fourth.
Yeah, what's it say in the?
Twenty nineteen.
This is Savoyard.
November, October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and November first, second, third.
But those are the performances, when do they wanna hang the?
From September thirtieth through November fourth.
Okay, September thirty.
Yeah, forget what I said about adjusting compensation.
It is good to know we just got four years back of our lives.
I, Alan Brown, move this.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
All right, attached to the package, you'll see town council's checklist for street acceptances, and they passed this along to the resident who was in a few meetings ago on. And they passed this along to the resident who was in a few meetings ago on Monroe Hill Road. And he, I think he's been in touch with you, maybe, Kate, since then?
Yes.
But I think this will have to wait until the spring, but at least he knows what he needs to do.
But also, we have to, we have to, okay, so then, going back to the policy book, because this made me scurry back to the policy book, Section 13, which was written in November of 1975. It needs to be reviewed and culled, because this is one of the ones where there's several versions of the same thing, slightly different in each one, and simplified. So, so that people are real clear about what they are supposed to do, and so, we're clear as to what we're supposed to do, because...
But these steps that are in here, in the laying out and accepting town ways, those are according to what they should be.
That's, that's more Planning Board, but the thing is that...
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying for the purposes of tonight and this particular, is this a motion we're making?
No, there's no motion, this is just...
Okay, this is just the legal process, yeah, so that all stays as is.
Yeah.
But there's really nothing for us to do.
Right.
No, there's not, okay. It's just, this is informational.
We're not gonna proactively take this step, because we, he's gotta still work with all the residents, right?
Yeah, and then it's gotta come back to us, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And there's that advisory from Labor Council regarding the Paid Family and Medical Leave Act, a number of reasons why they don't support, recommend that towns adopt it. And then I've got the upcoming meeting schedule. The special town meeting is on October 7th. I presume you wanted the poster 6:30 in the cafeteria, Justin Kins, so.
Just in case. So, do we have enough to put on the October 8th schedule?
I think we do, actually, yeah.
So, okay, because, I mean, we talked about not having that meeting if we didn't need it, but...
I think if we're ready to...
With this November deadline, I don't see how we could be skipping meetings before.
Yeah.
Right, now, if we have a Finance Director candidate to be hired, the better.
And then we also have the financial, yes, 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 yes.
We should keep that meeting.
Okay.
But we're saying we're not gonna meet at 6:30 before a special town meeting, or we are?
Well, we're gonna post it, and we'll let you know, you know.
Okay, yep.
I would think that we would want to, because we might know, we might know more about the citizen amendment.
Amendment.
Yeah, so, we'll do that. October 22nd, you'll hear back from the Personnel Board. A request you forward to them. The tax classification hearing could be November 12th, or it could be the 26th, depending on the state of the recap sheet at that point in time. I mean, Priscilla's been working very hard, holding things together in the Finance Department, and kind of focusing on the treasurer-collector side of things, you know, at the expense of her accounting duties, but she's getting caught up, but she had to kind of let her side of the house go a little bit to keep up with everything else. So, it might be the 26th, which would be fine, as far as getting tax bills out in December.
We moved her into Finance Director, and we moved somebody else into her role, right?
Into...
We just paid them off.
Wave your arms.
Maybe she hasn't been paying the bills.
We did, on a temporary basis, she's interim, yeah, Finance Director until the new person is hired. And then looking ahead on the schedule, we've got a meeting on December 24th, so.
Oh.
I don't know if I'll still in that night.
Yeah. Let's cancel that one.
No, it'll probably be here, yeah.
We could reschedule it, but we won't know until the 10th, whether we need it or not.
Yeah, right.
Can I go back for a second on the, just because I don't know this process, the Personnel Board recommendation? So, how far in advance of our meeting will we get to see what they're, what they've come up with?
They're, let's see, we're meeting on the 22nd, so they're gonna meet Thursday before that, so, probably by the 18th or so, we'll have a memo from them, and maybe the Chair, the Personnel Board, could come to that meeting and explain what they're... Well, they understand that the 15th is the deadline, that they have to get back to you, and...
So, we will, we're not talking about making a decision that night about which of those positions we might be recommending? We're just gonna hear what they've come up with in terms of cost?
Well, I think if you know at that point in time, like, you know, gee, I don't really, wouldn't support this under any circumstances, or yes, I really think this should go to the Finance Committee, I guess, you know, it'd be appropriate to have that kind of a discussion, I think.
And what do we think's gonna happen? I mean, do we, there's just no way to know until we see it, okay.
I mean, we'll probably move most forward, but maybe one or two we don't.
Really?
Really.
And then, also, November 26th is two days before that, so...
Exactly.
We'll have to keep an eye on that one as well.
I think we usually met that week, because it is two days before.
Yeah, okay, just...
You know, your Adam and Dick's can watch us on TV.
Why they could just come here.
That's true.
That's true.
All right.
All right.
Leasance reports. Yeah, I, I wanna update people on the Deer Committee, just briefly if I could.
I heard beer committee.
Oh, no, the Deer, the Deer Control Committee.
Thank you.
So, the hunt begins a week from Monday, October 7th. And the signs are gonna go up on the trails, starting this Sunday and through the week, but they'll be up at least four or five days before the actual hunt begins. The sign, the signs have been modified a little bit from last year, and they're, the last draft is going through by Town Council as we speak, so, that's underway. And we, we've decided that we wanna do a, another sort of community input session. But the way our schedules have worked out, we aren't able to do that until after the hunt's already started, which is, what we're proposing is that we're gonna actually have a social time from, on Sunday, October 20th, we have a social time from 1:30 to 2:30, where those that would like to come and meet the hunters that are gonna be on the various parcels, all the hunters have committed to be there. And then, at 3 o'clock, we would have a community input session or discussion, I don't know exactly what the right name would be for it, but it's basically to tell people about what, the reasons for the hunt again, and we're getting somebody from Fish and Wildlife to come and talk about just what they've learned about the deer population, and, and then give people an opportunity to either share their concerns, or raise questions, or, but basically, it's just an effort to continue to educate people about what's happening. So, the social is gonna be at my house from 1:30 to 2:30, and then, we're probably gonna use this room for the community input session. I'd very much like the members of the Board to come to the social time, if possible, just because I think it would be good for the Board to show its support for the bow hunt, since we...
What day did you say that was again?
It's Sunday, the 20th. 1:30 to 2:30, and then...
20th of October, obviously.
Sunday, October 20th, yeah, yeah. And I'll send you, you know, an official invitation, but I think it'd be good for there to be a show of support from the Board, and if some of you wanna come to that committee input session, that'd be great, too, but I think we can handle it as the Deer Committee.
Oh, well.
But did you say that the hunting starts a week from Monday?
It does, yeah.
So, this is considerably after that.
So, this is, yes, it's gonna be two weeks after, just the way the scheduling works out.
We're gonna have venison?
Yes.
We should.
The, the social is really geared toward the abutters, so, no, I don't think we're gonna put that on the, just the, the community input, yeah, here in the Clark Room, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I've got a list of all the abutters, so, we're gonna send out an invitation to them.
Are you going to also invite Timberduck?
I certainly can, yeah.
I think it would be wise.
Okay, okay, sure.
Part of being out in nature.
Yeah, well, you know, I would not want it ever to be said that they didn't quite understand when we told them this, and I think it'd be important to make sure they understand the whole import of this thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Any deer around, a group of screaming kids. Deserve to be shot.
The other thing I'd like to report on is the Affordable Housing Trust, just to say that we are pushing, well, four, the five of us are there, but that we're pushing hard on trying to deal with the non-Board of Health issues at Benfield. And I've just recently met with the, the building inspector, John Mativie, who is great. There are a couple of things on the list of issues that he can address, but the rest of them are really just fall under maintenance and the management of the property. So, I, I talked with Town Council, with Tom. He can't come next week because he's away on vacation, but he has now got a couple of his staff people looking at the lease specifically to identify, are there any steps that we can take as the Trust around any of the issues that have been identified at Benfield? And he's gonna have that to us by the end of the week.
I invited today, the manhole covers still are not on.
Yeah, I know.
Well, that's dangerous.
And then, they're back at the, well, no, the covers are on.
There's covers on it, but there's the ones with the gorilla tape holding them on.
Yeah, they, you know, they need to be sealed, and that's what's releasing some of the odors, yeah. They're due back, they're not due back to the Board of Health until October, I can't remember.
Man covers.
First week of...
They said it was gonna be installed last week, I thought.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's sort of a larger conversation that we had at the Trust that I, about sort of what, what's, what's happening with Benfield going forward? And what are, what's Giffy thinking in terms of NOAA's, their ability to maintain the property going forward? And how we get it back on track? And then, what's their, as you were, you know, raising at the meeting, Nathan, is what is their kind of law, what's their long-term budget look like? And, and is it going to cover the cost of managing and maintaining the property as they should? And, and then, what does it, what does that mean for us as the Town of Carlisle in terms of, if there's a gap there, what, you know, what's gonna happen? And I think we, I'm more and more inclined to do something that Nathan was raising, which is to actually convene a meeting with Giffy and Bodri, you know, the engineer he's hired, but also somebody from Peabody, and then, some key people from, from art, from the town, including John Mativie, and then, somebody with some engineering background, and have them present to us their, their budget for Benfield. So, and, and so we can actually look at it and see what their, what their plan is going forward, what their finance, what their finances look like in their operating budget, and then, figure out, if there's a gap, what do we, what do we propose and we're gonna do about that? And we, we have, you know, we have some CPA funds that are designated for affordable housing now. I don't know if they're designated, if they're allowed to be spent on, you know, maintenance of a property that we hold the lease on, or if it can only be spent on, say, an operating, I mean, a capital expense, but...
I think it's different for housing. Typically, maintenance isn't allowed, but for some reason, I think it is for housing. It's not, you can't do like routine type stuff, but, you know, it's more so when something, you know, is no longer usable, it can be replaced.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm gonna check right now, because for some, housing is a completely different set of rules.
Yeah, so I just think we need to be thinking about that, and, and looking at what is possible. The other, the other thing, I, I chatted with a couple of folks that were involved in Benfield in the early days, and they were also suggesting that maybe we should go to Bank of America.
They don't talk to some of us anymore.
We should go, we should check, talk to Bank of America, who is, I guess, as their Community Reinvestment Act, to meet those requirements. They, they covered some of the tax credits, I guess, is that, Luke, you probably know more about this than I do.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, but they might be interested in, if, if there was a gap, that it, that they might be able to do something in terms of getting the building up to where it needs to be, and then, we try to get NOAA to where they've got a budget that is going to be able to maintain the property, and then, maybe it's new expenses, you know, like for capital expenses is something we might consider coming out of CPA funds, so, yeah. So, it's just, I just think we, I think, Nathan, right? We need to look at the big picture and long-term, as well as at the same time, we're working, trying to get these short-term problems addressed.
Yes.
I think a lot of it is how, you know, I think, I totally think we should do this. I think, I worry a little bit about how we present it, right? They're, they're a for-profit company, and so, I, I wouldn't wanna come into it as, how are we gonna fill the gap as much as, you tell us you don't have money, you're telling us that this is, how bad is this problem? You know, are you going to be closing this facility down? You know, like, kind of, what is your long-term plan, you know?
Right.
I, I think, you know, the approach should be, we're not gonna help, you know, you're, you're a for-profit, but it sounds like you're in really deep trouble. Tell us more about that. And then, after they tell us more, I just don't want them to go into it thinking, oh, we're just gonna bail them out.
Right, I totally agree.
I wouldn't be in favor of that, because that's just gonna be this massive hole with, with a partner that's not a very good partner.
Right.
Yes, no.
Right?
I thought they were supposed to be a nonprofit company.
They were.
Well, they were, and so...
They converted.
If you read the articles, they actually were a profit company right at the very beginning, because that was seen as, the articles, it, it was seen as a benefit. Because they were a for-profit company, they had to pay taxes, and we were gonna get $28,000 a year from them. That was kind of all part of the articles and the mosquito around the launch of it. So, it was, it was great for us that they were a for-profit, because we, we got the taxes. It's not that we didn't tax them, it, we got the tax.
Yeah, okay.
I think it was 28,000 a year.
It was, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, CPA funds were allowed to provide grants, loans, rental assistance, security deposits, interest rate, write-downs, and other forms of assistance directly to individuals and families who are eligible for community housing, or the entity that owns, operates, or manages such housing for the purpose of making housing affordable, right? So, you know, I mean, it seems like there's some wiggle room in that. But, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we could give them...
We could do it to individuals.
Yeah.
Yes, in fact, that, this is something I was hoping that you guys would be eventually looking into about, you know, we could be offering, you know, seconds, you know, or down, for down payments to young couples to buy, you know, houses and stuff like that, so...
Well, every couple of years, we, we get a thing from Habitat for Humanity, too. They, they always wanna do a project in Carlisle. I mean, I think it's one of those that goes out to a bunch of different communities, but, but, you know, unfortunately, Carlisle's just damn expensive that, you know, it doesn't make sense to necessarily do it, but it might be something to look into, you know, for that as well, you know? I mean, it's expensive, but, yeah, I think, you know, there are different ways that you can do that, right? You can, you can supplement a family, or you can supplement an organization, you need to try to leverage the funds any way we can, so.
And how much is in the housing portion of the CPA?
Four-something, low fours, I think.
Yeah.
Some money. With a public water supply, you could probably, and individual septics. I think what the, the problem is, these large septic systems don't work well. But you had individual septics and a public water supply, then you don't have to have such, such a big property, so, it's possible that we might be able to find somewhere to develop that.
Well, that's what we have at Benfield, right? Public water supply and its septic.
Yeah.
But they've also chosen to use a...
But they, they, a big septic, I mean, because that's a big thing. I'm thinking of doing small houses like the Woodward property.
Well, he's gonna have one big septic.
He's gonna have a big septic, but I'm... He's going to have a big septic, but I'm.
Yeah, it's, a lot of it's maintenance though, I mean, they've got to be maintained, right? Yeah, so.
Any other liaison reports? Thank you.
Beverly Shory and I went to the Mass Selectment Association's meeting on housing last Saturday down in Lakeville. It's not surprising that most of the solutions that people reported there don't apply very well to Carlisle.
Yeah, that's.
You know, like getting $4 million in mitigation money from the large shopping center that's going in.
Yes, yes.
But it was interesting and there was some, it was worth going to, but really no great solutions for, profitable for us.
Anybody planning on going to the MMA annual?
January.
January?
Well, I might go. I was informed that there was some benefit to the town in terms of our insurance.
There there is, depending on the number of workshops you go to and, yeah, there is a discount on the insurance.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Been doing that.
I have a parking space two blocks away.
Oh, hey. I'll carpool with you.
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
I just have a quick update with Complete Streets, if everybody else. Yeah, so we met again, there weren't any significant changes as to what I had discussed the other day. The only thing was we we were talking about a significant amount of cobbles in terms of the islands and and along the edge of the road, and I think all that's going to be turned into green space now, so it's just going to be primarily grass, you know, we may put some low shrubs, bushes, that sort of thing, but it's primarily going to be grass now. You know, the the cost of cobbles was way too much, but also just in terms of, you know, maintenance, we weren't sure, but Gary said there's no issue maintaining this stuff. He maintains a lot of it now. So that's the proposal that we're going to put forward. I can forward everybody the presentation that that we, in a sense, approved at the last Complete Streets meeting. It'll be the presentation that, I don't know who's actually presenting, probably David and I will present at the special town meeting. And then the idea is we'll have that at the very end and then if people want to have a back and forth and want to ask questions, they can do that. So it'll be the first of probably a couple of information sessions, but, yeah, chugging along. Oh, but, but as Tim said earlier too, the goal is going to be to start that project when school ends, probably July 1, because traffic drops off dramatically. So there's going to be, have to be traffic pattern changes and all of that stuff and the chief's going to look at that.
Actually, come to think of it, every time I see people trying to make a left onto school from the rotary area, did that ever, is that addressed in our Complete Street plan there?
No, so that that'll have to be the next phase. Yeah, because the, I think the idea would be the next phase would really look at Westford Street and ultimately if Westford Street becomes just, there's, gets rid of that stop sign, you know, we would not necessarily prohibit that left turn, but, well, probably we'd make it one way, right? And ultimately, you'd be forced to turn down Concord and turn up.
Ah, good, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so it would change the flow, but it would, right, so down would be one way.
Oh, you could still turn right into it, yeah.
Yeah, but down would probably be one way, right? And and then, yeah, you force people to make that left and, you know, it gives you enough space for queue and all of that stuff.
Right.
But, yeah.
There's a confusion of whether they're going down Concord or not.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, that would all be phase two.
Well, five minutes to 10. Five minutes early for adjournment.
There you go.
Would I just talk for five more minutes or should I go home?
I move adjournment.
That's because we didn't have the minutes to do. We would, we would have just still squeaked it under the the wire. Okay.
All righty.
Oh, yeah, that was the other, the, in the.
Slam my wrist on something.
No idea what.
Policy book, we have fees and licenses, et cetera, section, and we have an auto dealer license, did you know that? Or fee, I don't remember whether it was a license or a fee, it's like.
Does the auto body place have a license?
What do you think?
They do sell cars on occasion.
Oh, maybe that's why.
Sometimes they just want the license so they can go to the auto auction. Yeah, maybe. They don't sell from their place of business, but they need a license to get into the.
Oh, okay, that's, because I was wondering, what the heck? What was that?
All these interesting things you're discovering.
The fee is 27,000 dollars.
Yeah, really, that's the fee. Oh, gosh, a missed opportunity.
I know, I know, we're going to change.
Maybe the fee, this was done in like, you know, odd two, you know.
How long have you had your cat? Oh, gosh, oh, that's awful.
Well, we're still going. Oh, so we shouldn't bash the public yet?
That's right.